Good afternoon, everyone. It's Wednesday, September 5th. The school board briefing, this is the school board briefing and the time is 1:00 PM. Sergeant Arms, has the front lobby been cleared?
Yes.
Thank you. Board member Morgan is joining us today by phone. I want to confirm. Ms. Morgan, are you on the line?
I am. Hello, everyone.
Thank you. There are eight items on the agenda today: job descriptions, construction projects, bi-monthly update, civil rights and equity guide, briefing first reading, policy review, district advisory council or DAC, agenda review of September 5th, 2024, public comment, and good of the order or other business. Per board protocol, each board member should strive for four minutes for initial comment, two minutes for follow-up, with a total of 10 minutes for discussion. We're going to begin today with job descriptions. Welcome, Angela Montemorano. She will be presenting.
Thank you. Good afternoon, board members and superintendent and board attorney. Today, we have one job description that is before you. It is a revision to the executive director of human resources, just putting it into the appropriate new format, as well as some wording changes.
That is all I have today. Okay, thank you. Superintendent, do you have any comments?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Board members, any comments regarding job descriptions?
Just curious, we just received one for Director of Transportation Services that just handed to us.
That, that's on the action item meeting for this evening. There was questions about that in the questions that came through, but we did that briefing on August 21st.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan, do you have any questions? Any more questions or follow-up, board members? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is our construction projects bi-monthly update. Scott Rickenbacher and Melissa Rivera will be presenting. Welcome this afternoon.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Savage, Esquire Dupuy Bruno, this is a bi-monthly capital update. Melissa's bringing it up on the show. I want to make you all aware before we begin that this was recommended by the RSM audit that you requested for the Riverdale High School process. We set a target of every two months because to get information every month would be very repetitive. You'd be getting the same slides as we get the information from our design professionals and construction professionals. So today, we're going to give you a little bit of both. The presentation that was uploaded into board docs approximately a month ago, and we also are going to be doing some verbal updates of information that has recently come in in the last few weeks to give you a current look at where each project is in the presentation. All right, you ready? Here we go. So first up is the Bay Shore K-8 expansion. As you can see, we're in the design schematic phase right now. District staff is working with school staff and our design professionals to lay out that project, which is to be turned open in October of 2026. There will be portable set out in the summer of 2026 to accommodate the influx of those middle school students that will be arriving in that fiscal year. Right now, we have a 30% estimate due for Bay Shore.
It has not come in yet.
And it has not come in yet, so we're pushing to get that estimate to us from the architectural firm. So as we get that information, we will bring it forward to either Chief Operating Officer Larry Stevens, so he can have it in your one-on-one, so you know. But that's a delayed submission by the design team. Are there any questions on any of the other data? The items in each one of these sheets are exactly what was portrayed in the RSM audit recommendation, so we followed that criteria.
We have one question. Mr. Persons?
Yes, it is, uh, what is the cost to put the portables basically out there for two months? Is there any way to, I mean, that's what it looks like to me, like it's, uh, should be finished in October.
The end of October is the anticipated completion date?
Right, so it'll be October, September, and a little bit of August. I know there's a cost there. Is it worth trying to expedite to save that cost? I mean, I know it could be overtime, it could be a number of things, but I don't know.
The problem is, is expediting of materials and labor aren't always guaranteed.
Okay.
But August 8th or 12th, whatever opening date will be in that fiscal year, is always guaranteed. And if I don't have suites for students, then someone has to pay that price. And it takes about four and a half to five and a half months to set up a small campus like that. We have to bring in brand-new utilities for that portable campus, meaning electric. And I think last time when Dr. Banier was in the seat, we estimated about $750,000 in utilities, and I believe we were saying somewhere in the neighborhood of $75,000 for each portable to be set, refreshed, and prepared and ready for school. I believe there's eight portables that were required there.
Right. Okay, I just wondered, is there any way to save that money?
As we get.
You only remember the design done yet, so I know it's hard to say.
That is correct.
But please look into that, if there's any way to expedite it.
If there's a way, if there's a way to accelerate the project, the problem is our long lead items, like our switch gear, our air conditioning units and things of that nature, are preventing us from really advancing and escalating the construction timeline earlier because of those long lead items. Next on the list is Benita Springs Elementary School rebuild. You can see right now that we have a budget estimate of about $40 million, which was approved. The current estimate for the project is 35.3 million. We're in the middle of the Castaldi review process with the state. We're told that we're number three, so we've moved up substantially from 21, I think at last reporting you guys have had. We have engaged with a historic survey, which has been issued to the superintendent and his staff for review. It looks at how we could save the historic designation of that campus, and the only way to do that is to save and leave that building in place. Now, what that basically means is that the outside skin would have to be maintained in its current position, while we basically gut the entire interior structure, all of it. Somehow manage the outside skin, tie it all together, and then create some new space. That can be done. The cost of that is estimated between $8 to $10 million, and right now, I believe the chief of operations has discussed this with the superintendent, and I believe they'll be having discussions with you guys as to whether we move forward with that concept or proceed with the original concept, which was the demolition. It has not been determined to date. Okay, right. We have 30% estimates that are due on a.
Ms. Chivinelli?
Question. So the Benita Springs, the historical part of the school, I know we have, we've had several other schools that had, has, that's historical, like the Fort Myers Beach. And I thought Alva was also, when were, so we just kind of restored Fort Myers Beach, so when was Benita, was it ever restored with the historical society at any point in time, as well as Alva? I had heard that they were, and I was just curious when that was, when the, that happened.
Alva was restored. I actually did that job. It was their theater area. There had been a previous, years before I came to work here, where they did some cleanup of the woodwork in the actual historic classroom building. The Fort Myers Beach was not done with capital funding. It was actually, it's part of the hurricane funding line. So the money expanded to maintain Fort Myers Beach as part of that hurricane. Hopefully, we get reimbursed for it funds, whereas Benita would be pure capital and/or tax referendum, depending on how we choose to pay for it.
So, but my question is, has Benita ever been historically renovated through any historical grants or anything like that?
I was, not during my tenure that I'm aware of. I know that maintenance has done some window work there, painted the building, added some HVAC, whether or not it was part of a historic restoration program. I can speak to that.
Could you find out, because I'm being told that it was, and that there was money spent for that? And I would be curious if that's the case.
We could certainly look into it.
Thank you.
We have a few more questions. Mr. Fisher, then, Ms. Patrica?
Thank you, and this may be more of a question, just comment to Dr. Savage. I just want to make sure that we're keeping in touch with the stakeholders in the city of Benita as we make these changes and as things progress.
Yeah, yes, Chair Fisher, just, I want to make sure that the whole board is aware, but also just, you know, I'm sure Mr. Rickenbacher is also aware, part of, after they received the initial feedback, the city of Benita, they had asked us to get a dollar value of what it would cost to do that. And so, once we had that report commissioned, it was architectural review, the next step was to make sure that they were aware of the findings of that report, and then how does that then reconcile with potential options that we have at that site, understanding that there's a significant additional cost for that potential option.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Ms. Patrica?
Yeah, does my memory serve me correctly, the, in addition to FEMA funding for Fort Myers Beach, didn't we, weren't we able to avoid the 50/50 rule by preserving that historic building, thus saving us money on the rebuild there?
They gave an exemption for that particular building so that it didn't have to get raised to the appropriate floodplain level, which is currently in place at this time. So when we do the cafeteria building, which we're now starting, we're in our design process for that cafeteria expansion, the slab on that's approximately 13 feet above plain, so it's about 13 feet taller up in the air than the existing historic slab will be.
Right. So, so really, I mean, that saved us quite a bit of money on that restoration, and that savings would not be available to us at Benita Elementary, correct?
I.
Because there's no, there's no flooding?
There was, there was no storm damages that occurred to Benita Elementary, so I don't see where that would be applicable.
Okay, thank you.
And before we move on, I just want to make sure, Ms. Morgan, do you have any questions regarding?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
And then one last item on Benita Springs. You'll notice that it said a 30% estimate was due August 20th. We have pushed and allowed the designer to push that back to a September 20th delivery of that design estimate. What we've done is, when we engage with the city and our architects to come up with a historic salvage plan, we've redesigned that entire building concept from when it was presented to you folks several, several, several months ago, and it's two options that we'll have when this estimate comes in. So if it's determined not to move forward with the salvaging, we take option B, which that estimate will come on the 20th. If it is determined to engage in salvage, we have option A. That's part of that package that we can move. So we've given them an extra month for the delivery of that, so we're, we're poised to go either direction very quickly, and the end delivery date of the project is not affected by this one-month addition in time for design.
Ms. Jordan?
In what you just mentioned, so does that mean that, so now there's two designs, so does that double our cost?
No, no, it isn't. We stopped and redirected our efforts, knowing that there's a potential it could go either way. So the design that's coming in will serve the purposes. If it, if it becomes where we salvage the historic building, that's mostly going to be a media center and mechanical rooms. If it turns where that building comes down, then we have a way of creating that whole area with a new structure in that square footage, same footprint, that will house classrooms and things of that nature. So it's just, it was adapting the design so that we could quickly shift, knowing that this could go either way.
Thank you. Mr. Persons?
I believe I heard that the new design would look a lot like the old building. Would not be historical, but it would have the same.
The intent is to try, the original design was definitely to mimic that. It will have those features to it. It may not, our original presentation of what that look would be was much closer to a historic mimicking. This will have historic components that come as close as practical.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next up, Cape Coral Technical College. A lot here, and there's some additional information that I'll speak to that's not on your slide. Currently, we have a project estimate approved by the board of $25 million. We're working towards a design for that expansion. We've gotten the approval from our risk management department to go ahead and demolish the old Hector Cafaretta School Building, which the extension for Cape Tech actually moves into that property profile. So we've already got a designer, the designs are done, and right now, we're putting together an ITN to do the demolition, similar to what we did down at Fort Myers Beach. We have, right now, is it August 15th, our 60% estimates came in. Now, this is, the CM is $22.9 million. The architect is at $20.7 million. That's at 60% design documents. So between August 15th and when I put this in the board docs, that's the new information I want you guys to be aware of. And this will be represented two months from now, and the next update you get, you'll see this in the actual lines. The, we're doing value engineering because those fees are not inclusive of our FF and E on our Phase 1 fees. So obviously, if you take the assumed $20 million and $22 million, and you add a potential of $5 to $6 million to that, we've gone through the board-approved budget of $25 million. So at this moment in time, we are doing VE to try and reduce the cost, to design to budget. There's still a lot of wiggle room between 60 and 90% drawings, where people start losing their allowances, design allowances, and it's like a safe kitty money, and we get closer to the real number. So this, this doesn't scare us. We feel that we will be able to bring this in within the $25 million budget at the end of the day, but I'm just alerting you to the fact that right now, the dollars are showing that we're going to be probably over the $25 million which was approved. But it's our job to do VE, and if no VE can be done and it affects the program, it's our job to come here two months from now and let you know what your potential options could be. Either increase the value or accept the value engineering to degrease it, to stay in budget, and that's part of what this presentation will be, to alert you to all these projects. Does that make sense?
So, because of the fact that we've moved the location of the new building, does that, you know, because it was supposed to go in the back end, but now it's going to the side, is that affecting the cost on this?
No, no. It's, the square footage is a square footage. The demolition of Cafaretta will come from a separate funding line. This is just the cost of square foot construction right now.
Okay.
Adult educational vocational facilities are running upwards of $650 a square foot when you add all of the equipment and the specialty designs that are needed for these vocational. It's gone through the roof. We normally would put about a $450 value on that about a year and a half, two years ago. It's gone up that high. We're not the only county. Joel De Guzman from Planning has recently attended the FESPA meeting they held up there, and all the other counties are also seeing these astronomical increases in square foot costs for student space.
Okay, and then one more, thank you for that. And then one more question. I know in the past, when we were speaking about this, we were looking at possibly going out and looking for naming rights to help some of the cost for the garage, or?
I can't speak to that. That might be another division.
Okay.
I, I, I'm, I'm not involved in school naming.
Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
This is a question probably, you're probably going to need to answer later from finance, so I might put this as well to Dr. Savage. I just want to see if when we're looking at the budgeting on this, just that it reflects the two legislative appropriations for that, so if we could get a follow-up on that. When we're looking at the budget, I know for the Phase 1 and the 2 audit.
So yes, when we discuss the $25 million budget, that is inclusive of the legislative dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions on Cape Tech? Moving on, Cypress Lake Middle. As you can see, the budgeted amount for that project was $120 million, $120 million. It was approved in FY '25 by the board. We currently have estimates at 30% that have come in from the architect at $85.7 million. That's the architect's number, and the CM had estimated $108.7 million. That's at 30%, mind you. Again, this is schematic design, first blush, padded with a lot of contingencies in it. We currently have just received, and this is information that's not on your slide, but will become slide material two months from now, we received the architect's 60% estimate, and we're at $88.5 million. So what you can see, as you go from the 30 to the 60, you can have a dramatic range and change in the numbers because a lot of the padding starts to come out of it. But again, I want you to be aware, the $88 million does not necessarily include FF and E and all of the Phase 1 pre-construction dollars, which I believe on this project, I just came back to you, I think it's around $10 million plus or minus. So we're still tracking, we're still tracking on the approved budget of the $120 million, and I think we're going to be where we need to be. So that job is moving forward. Are there any questions? And we should have the CM's number, I'm sorry, 9/13 is usually two weeks after the architect delivers the percentage drawings. The CM has two weeks after that to provide his number to us, so on the 13th of September, we'll have the CM's number to correspond with the $88 million number.
Mr. Persons?
The, more or less $10 million for the portable campus, how long do we think they will have to be in the schools for?
Oh, well, we'll go back to the other book then.
Oops, sorry.
I knew I was going to need this, so I brought it.
And is there additional charge each year?
We have timeline sheets for each one of our large capital projects. Right now, substantial completion for that campus is June 1st of 2026.
Okay.
So they'll be in portables as soon as we get the portable set. We can occupy them with the principal, then we'll start some selective demolition, and they'll be in there until June of '26.
Are these portables that we own already?
Yes, sir.
We're not having to lease them or anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
They've already been refreshed. We've already gone out there with our portable refresh budget. They sit at Franklin Parks. We've already gone out there and refreshed them, carpeting, ceilings, paints, blinds, doors, windows, all those things in preparation for the move to that site. So it's one less step we have to do. So again, just in closing on that, 60%, $88.5 million from the architect, 9/13 will get that similar number from the construction manager, so you can see how it's tracking. Next item is Franklin Parks. Nothing really to report here. It was an $83.5 million project approved by the board in February of 2023. Substantial complete July 1. It opened, and the students are in there as of August. There is no action by the board required on this job, and the second slides are just a couple of pictures. The interior courtyard area, playgrounds, the gymatorium, and just some of the interior pictures as you go through the hallways with the various colors of luxury vinyl tile and so forth. Any questions?
Mr. Rickenbacher, are there any lingering construction, like any activities going on this campus, or is it completely?
We're still doing punch lists.
Okay.
All the punch lists should be complete at this time, with the exception that I'm aware of is the playground. We've been trying to get the playground installer, the specialty installer, to do that. They are slammed. Obviously, all the schools are opening up, and they're trying to button up playgrounds in all districts. So hopefully, in the next week or two, that'll be done. We have entered what we call the closeout phase. So this is where all the as-built drawings, warranties, guarantees, manuals, that we provide a full set to the school staff, and we keep a set over at the Canal Street Annex, and then prepare for auditing to go to the external auditor to audit the project.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Hector Cafaretta, this is the PPP project, replacing the Hector Cafaretta campus. The total board-approved cost was $124.9 million, which you approved in June of this year. The substantial completion for this project is August 1st of 2026. Right now, we are in schematic design. The 30% drawings are done. We do, we have held meetings, typically about once a month plus or minus, where we bring in the school-based administrator, the principal in this case. in the school-based administrator, the principal in this case, to participate in the schematic design and any changes or alterations that we can do within the parameters of the contract. The next meeting is actually scheduled for tomorrow morning at the Canal Street Annex. So we've had the principal there, we've had some of your new academic or assistant superintendents?
Regional.
Regional superintendents, sorry. They've been attending this meeting as well to see as this PPP, we're a little more constrained in terms of what we're allowed to change and modify, but they've been accommodating to date, and I think everybody, it's been a pretty good meeting. And tomorrow's going to be a little bit of the look of the building, the elevations of the building, and where we're going with that. So again, 30% drawings are done on that, and we are moving forward on that project. Last meeting we held was August 13th. Moving on, any questions on it?
How much of the Hector is probably going to be paid for by FEMA? I mean, because it's hurricane damage or insurance? Or is it just all capital?
I, you know, Melissa came from the budget department. I stole her, so she might have a little inside track, but personally I'm not.
I know that I'm paying for it all because it wasn't a K-8 before, it's just a...
I know that they're still working on that. Warren had, from Risk Management, had reached out to us to get what our last elementary school cost was, because they felt that the number that came back from FEMA was lower than what we had asked for. So they're still in the process of that, so we're not pretty, you know, sure just yet how much.
Okay, thank you for pursuing that. Don't give up.
Mr. Fisher?
Thank you. Mr. Rickinbacher, any idea when the, a guesstimate of when the shovel's going to be in the ground for that school? Sorry.
I'm so glad I brought my book. Let's see. Hector Cafaretta, there we go. Construction is indicated to begin around April 2nd of 2025, and it's anticipated to be a 16.1-month construction duration.
Thank you, sir.
Gives you plenty of time to do naming rights. Fisher, K-8.
Oh, we already have it named after someone. Sorry, you'll have to wait for another school. That's going to be a big one. All right. Any more questions on Hector Cafaretta? Nope, okay. Next is Innovation School. Okay, let me start at the beginning on here. Obviously, with the academic changes that have happened, we have new partners in academic area that have become involved in our project, so we're trying to bring that, those staff members up to speed in, in all of the things in the design and the thought process. Dr. Cupid McCoy has become actively involved in this discussion as well. Right now, you had approved a original budget of 122, 120 million, 22 or 29? The original budget. I think it was 120 million was your original approved budget in the capital plan. The capital plan that you're approving tonight has increased that to 128.5 million. The reason for that is escalation, cost, materials, and quite frankly, the innovative design. So we have had, August 14th, they were slightly behind schedule on the delivery of the estimate. And we got the estimate just recently, a couple days ago after hounding the design team. If we do the full design complement that has been part of the charrettes with curriculum and FGCU and all of that staff, right now, the estimate without FF and E by the architect is 138 million. So obviously, even though tonight we'll be asking you to bring this to 128.5, if we were to do the full innovative design concept, we're still way over. The architect has hence reduced square footage. What that does is it still could be considered innovative school, but some of the larger open space plan area and construction and internal areas, if that were to be reduced, because that's how you save dollars is by reducing square footage, they believe that they can bring it down to 115.8 million. Now again, that's without FF and E in our Phase 1 dollars. So typically FF and E in Phase 1 is about 15%. So if that, if we were to reduce the square footage to try and maintain that 115 value, the remainder between 128.5 and that, I think, is, is doable to include our FF and E and all of our Phase 1 implementation costs.
This is one that I've kind of talked about before with the board and superintendent before the innovation. I mean, it sounds like a fantastic idea, but I'm really concerned about the cost on this, especially moving forward on certain elements, and I think that's one we really need to have a discussion with the superintendent and the board, and especially seeing, you know, perhaps if this is going to be a true partnership, getting some buy-in on it. So, thank you.
If I could, we recently met, a number of us, and there was, it was preceding a meeting that was going to occur with Florida Gulf Coast University as well, because it's, it's wonderful to have innovative ideas and so forth. We're always going to be able to innovation. However, you're also, when you have constraints, fiscal constraints, you have to operate in environment where sometimes the best innovation occurs within fiscal constraints. But anytime you have innovation that is adding substantial cost beyond what we would typically do through either one of our prototype designs or even a design build, where it starts to add substantial additional cost, that's something that for us becomes now a factor that we have to really weigh heavily, if it in fact exceeds that. And so that was something that we're bringing to that meeting with FGCU as well to make them aware of the significant additional cost. So that's not something that we're not already on the operational side already addressing and looking at. That's, that's also why the specific reflection that Mr. Rickinbacher said of, even though there is a current estimate, that's why this dollar value is actually significantly lower than the current estimate provided through that design, because we are certainly at the expectation of value engineering, which is represented here on the slide as well. But to think that we'll be able to get to that point without some type of financial contribution, I think is, that would be this time a significant concern administratively that I would have.
Mr. Persson's.
You sort of lost me on cutting down open spaces. Are these like lobbies or hallways, make them a little smaller? I don't know, I just, smaller bathrooms?
Open interior play areas and expansion and group clustering and, you know, a lot of, I'm a builder. I would say back in my era, it might be considered hippie space, but it's design space. So that would be taking that square footage out. There was a lot of glass folding petitions. I mean, that's top-end stuff. So, you know, the glass folding petitions may not be glass anymore. A lot of the folding petitions may go away for some walls, and we add windows for that visual continuity. Again, I'm not saying that's direction, it is, that's part of what the entire team does, but at the end of the day, the budget's what the budget is, and some hard decisions have to be made. The reason I bring these to you today is to share where this is going, and in order, these seats are needed for that zone and that capacity. So I, I cannot wait an extended period of time while these hard decisions and discussions are had. Decisions have to be made quickly so that I can maintain that, that schedule, that build schedule, and get this opened up so you have that capacity.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Giovinelli, then Ms. Jordan.
I think it's really important that when you say reduce square footage, that we're not reducing seats.
No.
Because I think that's really important that we're not doing that. What, do we know what the difference is in our, the savings that we would have if we used our prototype and not go with the fancy design? Because I think basically, we need a school more than we need the fancy designs. And my concern is, I would love to see the potential that we could, that we could add seats if we need to, like we're doing Bay Shore. I think that, I watched the briefing meeting from the 21st, and that was something Mr. Persson's brought up, and I think we need to be thinking like that, that they have the opportunity and the ability to add on seats, because we're not, obviously, God's not making any more land for us to build schools on, so the difficulty it is to find land, I think we might have to expand versus, you know, building new. So I just want to make, I was, and I know that this is something that Dr. Savage has asked about the FGCU's contribution, and I guess at this point, we've come, we have, we don't have one, they don't, they have come to the table with any money, you know, for that, right? So...
Up to the President, I know that was going to be raised at the most recent meeting. I don't have an update on if there has been either a contribution that's either intended or that there's a fundraising effort, or that any of those joint legislative, nothing at this point that I could share. All those things would be critical. I mean, now that we have dollar values in front of us, we kind of know what these additional aspects are, certainly we need to expect something, or we reprioritize this at the expense of other critical capital projects in our other, that are designed in many cases to add seats where we need them. So this, as Mr. Rickinbacher said, these are very difficult decisions. We certainly love partnerships. We think they're, they're essential in carrying out our business, but we just have to do it within the constraints of, things have gotten more expensive than what they used to be. We just, and we have limited dollars, we have to use them wisely. So these are very difficult things to, to, to talk through.
Ms. Patrica?
And is there a way to estimate the value of that partnership? Meaning the improvements that we'll see for our students as a result of the innovative teaching and learning practices that are coming out of that school? I don't want us to focus solely on the dollar amount. You know, like I look at, I look at Benita Elementary and preserving the historic front of a building, and I think, how many seats does that cost us in the east zone? That was the, the question that I asked you, Dr. Savage. I look at this project, and I think, what is the ultimate benefit to our students and our teachers? And is there a real dollar value we can put on that? I don't know how you estimate that, but I don't, I don't want us to just look at a number for a cost without considering what we're giving up in terms of that partnership and what we could do for innovative educational programs for our students in the future. Thank you.
Actually, an excellent question. We, we dialogued a little bit about that in our meeting, because again, you're, you're trying to take intangible benefits as well, and if you can create part of it, what's difficult in the return on investment type of analysis is that you have to try to value certain things like that. And I think that was one of the challenges that we had as a team when we were trying to evaluate the nature of what made this particular approach truly innovative, other than the name of it. What were the innovative practices? And then how do you really assess what is that impact? Those are things we actually dialogued about in terms of the impact of professional learning, the type of things to see. In fact, could we create some value for the organization out of that as well? So I think that's, we did discuss some of those elements, and those were also things that were going to be raised with that group. But in terms of arriving at a pure calculation, to your point, very difficult to do, but certainly part of our calculus as well. So thank you for giving you an opportunity to share that as well.
Ms. Morgan, do you have anything to add at this time?
Sorry, it takes me a minute to unmute. No, I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Jordan.
I was just going to say, I know we've had multiple conversations throughout the years prior to Dr. Savage. I mean, this goes way back when we first started speaking of this, on what is the contribution through, and the partnership, what does that look like? And we have not yet, and that's been years now, and so we still don't have an answer what that looks like. I actually did go, and we're talking about 1,200 students, a little bit, almost 13, versus 100,000 that we have in the district. And I did go to one of the schools in the, the innovative school in Pasco County when we first started talking about this. And as you said, it's just everything is open, and it's kind of open and free to do whatever. I want to sit over here, I want to sit over there. So I, I really couldn't see, because it was part of another school altogether. So it was innova, was here, and then regular school was here. But it was just the fact that these kids were everywhere and these kids were not. And so I don't know what that looks like as far as, what does that do for our, those children, the 12, 1260 versus looking at the broader, and know we need so many seats in, because as we discuss at our meetings, that we are so, already over capacity, and we need to have seats for our children.
Just again, on that note, you know, so, you know, what I was, it was notated to me that there was no commitment to any type of financial contribution, so I wanted to answer that question, so there is no, still no plan to fundraise or anything along those lines. But that said, part of the conversation did yield something that we did talk about before, because as you mentioned, Ms. Jordan, this is, this goes way back. One of the things we had also dialogued before about is that many of the universities that do these, they actually do them as lab schools instead. So instead of it being a district-owned school, what they do in partnership in some cases, many, and actually, most all of them that I'm aware of, the universities have the ability to create a lab school environment where it is actually their school. What's interesting about that in our state now is that they have the ability to access additional funding from the state that can help to contribute and offset some of this piece. They have a specific trust that is set up at the state level to account for additional expenses for university lab schools. Again, it's a separate, it's not, this is more of a traditional process where we'd own every aspect of it, it's completely our building, our land, everything along those lines. But that was something that apparently was reintroduced as part of the conversation as well, because those are things that potentially can help in that space. I've actually worked, I was a coach at one of the lab schools for University of Florida. I was at the, at their, PK Young, their lab school. We had classes, worked, our professors on that campus, also was in, when I was in Tallahassee, worked at the Florida State Lab School. I lived really close to their school after they moved to an offsite campus. That's now a charter system as part of that lab. So those are all things that have been considered at various different life stages of this design concept. Again, all those things are on the table in terms of that dialogue, but I would say where we have today, the way we've pivoted, if, if for example, FGCU were not interested in partnership, which they still are, very much interested in partnership. But if they weren't, then certainly the plan would have been to continue to build a campus on our site, proceed in that, knowing that they're still interested in partnership, but we have to work through what that could look like and other issues. We're certainly going to always value having space for kids, doing anything innovatively that we can in terms of these unique design concepts and partnership. So none of those things are off the table. We just, at this stage of the game, we have to keep things rolling, and we just want to keep you abreast of every issue as it comes.
May I jump in?
Ms. Morgan, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So it was my understanding that, when this all started, that our contribution to the partnership was the building and the students, and their contribution would be the teachers and the research, et cetera. Having watched one small initiative at Three Oaks, or no, Spring Creek, beta testing with a particular second-grade reading initiative, I'm wondering if, and I would love for Dr. Cupid McCoy to weigh in, I'm wondering if we're, we're think, we need to think about doing innovation on our own and within our schools, and beta testing in small pilot situations, what might work district-wide? I know that was the idea behind the lab school, but I am very concerned about the extent to which FGCU is going to be involved in anything other than providing the teachers and developing the strategies they're going to use. And to a certain extent, I think that we're developing that, that capacity ourselves internally. And so I would like to hear from Dr. Cupid McCoy in terms of where she sees innovation happening in the school district and where, what role partners might play. Thank you.
Unfortunately, Dr. Cupid McCoy's out of the country right now, but I, I'm familiar with this as well. We have a number of folks who are part of it, and, and I can assure you, she was actually part of our meeting with the FGCU school, so she's well-aware and committed to the idea of innovation. I think it's an excellent idea that anytime we have innovative practices, let's say for example, whether it's through FGCU or through our own aspect, this is a great example that you bring up, Ms. Morgan, where Dr. Cupid McCoy was intimately involved in this aspect. She's well-aware of that piece, and we have a number of staff who are part of that. So we did dialogue that if for some reason, things were to not mature any deeper with this Innovation School, that, that we would still keep an innovative concept, even if it was our own and other partnership opportunities within. Today, I'd say it's premature to, to move away from the partnership where it is, or not at that point yet, I would say, but certainly that is an option we did evaluate if in fact it wasn't moving in a direction that could work for both sides. So just, it's interesting that you mention that, Ms. Morgan, because that was something we actually dialogued about as well with Dr. Cupid McCoy.
Just a quick follow-up, Ms. Giovinelli. The, our prototype cannot be used on that parcel. That's an odd-shaped parcel, it's an undersized parcel. So the Innovation School actually is being custom-designed for that campus and that configuration. Just wanted to... Just wanted to put that out there. And believe it or not, we actually have the Army Corps of Engineers coming down to tour that site with us next week. That's, that's a first, that's a great opportunity, and hopefully we can have a bended knee to see if they can accelerate their review of our other parcels as well. Next on the list is elementary schoo-
One moment, we just have one more follow-up question, and I'm just going to remind everybody, we have, I think, seven more schools to go through, and it's 1:45. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for, to Ms. Morgan, because I know she was the one who's always brought this to our attention constantly with the FGCU partnerships. And then with, with, Mr. Fisher, speaking about having conversation, we, I think we do need to have more conversation about this, but you're waiting for us to give you some kind of directions on where to go with this as well.
No, this, this, you have to have those, start those conversations in earnest-
So you're good right now?
-to prevent me from falling behind and losing a capacity year.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Next up is L Elementary. As you all are aware, that's on that State Road 82. That is our dual-site, where we'll be opening in the same year, OO Middle, in L, which will be our prototype elementary and middle schools. Currently, right now, we were supposed to have 30% design drawings on August 19th. That is behind schedule, but there is a reason for that. We are developing the site work for L with OO. So what you'll notice, and when you approve the capital plan, you'll say, well, wait a minute, L was at like 100, or $96 million, and now they're only asking for 73. We've adjusted the values for the two schools, L and OO, because OO will be the driving, entire site parcel developer, with utilities, roadways, dirt, and so forth. So that you'll see, OO went up in value, in budget, and L came down, and it's a balancing act, but we're still within the two budgets. And we will have on the ARC only, the due date is the 4th. So we will find out if those came in yesterday, and get that information to you.
They switched it to the 9th.
They switched, they moved it to the 9th, so they've now alerted us they'll be providing that on the 9th. And again, I'll get that through to the Chief of Operations, so that you can have an update, you know, just on your one-on-ones, where that's heading. But so far, all of the current budgeting, we've had really good controls on that, and we feel that it's within the board-approved budget. Next up is Elementary M. This is a new school out in the east zone, it's on a property that we just bought, Savannah Lakes, a golf course, lots of lakes, and we are just starting our design process there. There are going to be a lot of legal involved with this, because everything was a planned community, and everything is platted. So now they've got to be combined into one parcel, so we're going to go ahead and start our design, how we think, there's going to be two schools ultimately on this site. How we are going to locate those, the accessibility, are lakes going to have to be filled, and that retainerage be pushed somewhere else on the property to better utilize it, because right now, it's, it's all chopped up. So that's where we are, we're in our schematic design completion. And the design completion in its entirety should be May of 2026, with, and the substantial completion for that particular school, M Only, is June of 2029. Any questions? Good, okay. The big one, NNN.
One moment, we have one question, Ms. Givinelli.
I'll be quick. The 1,000-seat elementary school for M, can, is there ability to add on seats to that, for the future, or, you know what I mean? Because as we're growing, right now, we, we needed those seats yesterday, so by the time we get this done in '29, I'm concerned that we will-
In our design, we will provide capacity, it really falls on the parcel. If there's, and I believe there is space on that parcel to do that. We could do a similar concept like we did for what is the new Lamb's Building, where we put an actual addition building on the end, because we had the parcel. If there is parcel, based once we do the sighting of this school on this parcel, if there is that room, I would design it for that, otherwise, we would find an area where you could add portables, and we'd have a manhole to intercept future electrical conduits at the side of the building, so we could bring in the power to feed the portables and things of that nature. But if there is acreage, and we have an area, we would allow for an extension, and that would increase, all we'd have to do is increase our electric and our HVAC capacity, similar to what we did at MM Middle or the new Lamb's Building.
Thank you. I just don't recommend planning for portables, we, I, planning for bill, you know, building. I don't like the portable idea, so, just for the record. Thank you.
Next school up, NN Middle School. This is the new high school out in Alba. As you can see, we have a budgeted amount of $162.2 million coming to the board this evening. The original budget amount, I believe, was 140. Obviously, the cost of construction and inflation has gone up. The current estimates that we have received, 60% estimates from the architect, are 165 million. So understand, the architect originally started out with a 30% estimate of 168 million. So he has now come down to 165 million, based on the progress at 60% of the drawings. Our CM at 30% has an estimate of 171 million for this school. Again, this is without FFNE and our Phase 1 costs. The 60% estimate from the CM will be given to us on September 9th. There's, as I spoke to before, there's about a two-week delay from when the architect provides those 60% drawings, for him to provide an estimate. So we believe, when you approve the budget tonight of 162.25, we actually believe that we'll be able to, as we get closer to the 90 and the 100, those prices, all of the cushion, will start coming out of that. We might have to do some VE to bring it in, but we think we can attain that, at this moment in time. And that's inclusive of all offsite roadwork and utilities being brought to the site and so forth. Any questions?
Did you say that was inclusive of that? Of the, the work that has to be done to get there?
The, the numbers I just gave to you are inclusive of all offsite roadwork and utilities required to power up the, the building, once we build a building on that site. And all of the fill, the elevation, the site work, everything is in that.
I believe we're able to stay away from any wetlands on that property?
We have, we are not mitigating or affecting any wetlands. Ultimately, you know, the Army Corps is going to want it, we have, we have put in for what we call a no-permit-required request. It's still no guarantee that it won't sit in the Army Corps of Engineers before we get that approval, but usually something like that can be expedited, if we're clearly showing that we're not impacting wetlands, and that's where we are right now. We've already submitted to the Army Corps, so we're just waiting to hear.
Be really nice to them tomorrow.
There is a Krispy Kreme near. Any questions on that? So again, I'll, again, through your one-on-ones, when the CM provides his 60% estimate on that, around the 9th of September, I'll make sure that that gets forward to you as well.
Ms. Morgan, do you have anything regarding NNN?
No, I do not. Thank you.
And just the timeline on that, I just want you all to be aware that this is a school that'll open in June of 2028. So you know, here we are, it's September of 2024, so you can see the durations and the timelines with the Army Corps and all the 404 vacation that has occurred, on how it affects us to ultimately deliver these seats that are so desperately needed in these, these Next school is the sister school that I spoke to earlier, OO Middle School, on the 82 parcel, the dual-site. 100% of these drawings will be finished at the end of September. And at that point in time, I'll have an estimate from the architect, and I will have an estimate from the construction manager. But understand that this building, we're not going to put this out to bid until I get the Army Corps of Engineers' approval. Because what I, I bought the CM going out to bid, one time. That means go out, solicit bids. When we are at that point where it looks like the Army Corps release is imminent, we will put both L and OO out for public bid, to gather that information, collect those bids, and then I'll bring it, I'll be coming to you for a total project cost approval for both of those schools at that time. And if I go to the book, to give you a rough idea, if, if the Army Corps was to take their entire timeline, I'm looking, in a perfect world of getting something to you around August of 26th. So understand where we are today. 100% drawings will be ready for both of those schools at the end of this month. I'll be sitting and waiting until Army Corps gets done, before I put it out for public bid. And hopefully coming to you in August of 26th, with a total project cost for each school. And by that time, these assumed values that you're seeing may not support the market value, so I just want you to be aware of that. I can't control the market, I can only, you know, we've put in inflationary concepts, 5% to 8% per year, per annum, to try, when we develop these timelines, but if I could tell you exactly what it was going to be, I'd probably be on Wall Street or something like that. Any questions on OO? I know you're depressed, we, we feel that the same way on our end, these dollars are just, it's crazy. You will be in the budget approving tonight, and it will indicate the removal of the OO West Zone High School out of the capital long-term budget plan. So that will come off the books, and assuming that the board approves that action, then we will, we will kill those contracts. Our intent, though, however, is to move forward with a civil engineer on that parcel, and get the Army Corps permitting. We can always dummy a footprint of a building showing our impact to any wetlands or water, get all of our, our Army Corps permitting started on that, I think that's, for that parcel, I think that's money well-spent. So that's how we're moving forward with that. And that money is in the capital plan budget already, that you'll be approving. Riverdale High School. I know you've all been out there, you've seen the media, we had a successful opening of the new Science Wing building that's out there, and an interior renovation to the cafeteria, and also some of the administration area, and obviously, all of the sites and the parking areas for the children. We still have a long way to go, so we're still working on what we call Phase 2A and Phase 2B, and between now and August of '25, we'll be bringing onboard the new gymnasium, all of the new entries and traffic signals will be complete, and all of the interior renovation of the remainder of the interior of that campus will be complete. I want you to be aware, we have been using project contingency, we have roughly a million dollars of project contingency to do this phase that we are currently in, that last GMP we approved. We are finding that the plumbing in that school is gone. When we started our design and we moved forward on this, we were told that the plumbing was in good shape. So in these phases that I've just recently completed, we spent approximately $230,000 to repair the plumbing, to allow us to maintain schedule through the, through the project contingency, which is part of the project. But I'm just making you aware, as we progress through this building and this campus, I will be eating into that million-dollar contingency. We're hopeful that there will be enough to support this unknown extensive plumbing failure at this school. So I'm not priming you that I'm coming to you for money, I just want you to be aware that there is a potential, that the $108 million that you approve could go up a little bit, when I say a little bit, you know, a million dollars, maybe two, at the work, but I don't anticipate that. We're going to use the project contingency, which I will report to, and you also will see in my monthly change order reports. That's another indicator, because you're obviously reviewing the change orders that occur.
Ms. Jordan.
Scott, could you just, I had written down, could you explain to me, please, what the school building envelope will be under a separate contract? What exactly does that mean, please?
Which project?
On, I'm sorry.
We're not hearing yet.
I'm sorry, I'm ahead. Forget what I just said.
When I get there, I will.
Take it back to me.
Are there any other questions on Riverdale? I, I hope you all have been out there, the place looks really great, I think they're happy.
Mr. Persons, do you have something?
I just had a question. What were the pipes made of, that they just, you know, basically, I know they're 50 years old, but-
Well, cast iron.
Cast iron back then? Okay. I was thinking that. They're not now, right?
No, they're not. And the best part was the electrical was, for the entire campus, the school was direct burial, wasn't even in conduit. So part of our project funds was obviously bringing in a new power feeder from FPNL, which we coordinated with them.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And then attached, you see just a couple of photos of the finished product of the revised cafeteria, and then there's a side view of the two-story Science Classroom building, and a picture of some of the interior of the Science Classrooms at the high school level. So it came out, I think everybody's pretty much, so, understand, it's a tough, when you do, we did it at Dunbar High School, too, when you're doing an existing campus renovation in an occupied, fully-loaded school, there's going to be pain and heartburn on all sides of the fence. It's our job to try and accommodate the school staff, they put up with a lot, and nobody is happier to see us leave than the principals and the teachers that are there, that have had to deal with the, the dust, the sound, the disruptions, oh, the fire alarm's going off. So it's a collaborative effort, but I, I just want you to be aware, these existing school renovations that are occupied are very difficult. Last but not least, VPAA, Lemille Teal, Black Box. We are currently managing all three, there's going to be a media event that Rob Spicker is working on for the tilt wall, starting to be lifted for the Black Box Theater. I've approached the superintendent and his staff for thinking about what you'd like to call the Black Box Theater, and I know that they're working on that. Since originally, it would have been, you know, when that was going to be a large Super K8 campus, it would have been whatever the name of that campus at the time would have been, but now, since the campus has been re, part of it has been renamed Lemille Teal, you still have the VPA on the other side, and the Black Box is close to Lemille Teal, we're just looking for a little direction on what that might want to be called. The board estimate that you approved was $55.4 million, we're still on track, and we're still on targeting. There is an issue where we went out, the brick on the Lemille Teal building is failing. We have gone out and do, done a structural survey outside of this project, for this very reason, for the brick. We are receiving quotes, but right now, I got a verbal quote today, to do the brick and, and repair it, it's approximately going to be at least $800,000. They recommend painting the brick with the Stow product. The Stow product is the same product we did the Lepek building with. Now, for slightly more, which is, this is all verbal, it's coming to me in writing in the next couple of days, or they recommend doing the same installation process that we did on the Lepek, which is fixing the brick to cracks, any water infiltration, putting that insulation you saw the guys around this building putting up, and then coming through with the, the Stow, like stucco, it's like a painted stucco. It's going to provide better insulation, and it's also going to provide from future leaks with the brick, there won't be maintenance of the brick, and it'll look similar to the outside of the Lepek building, and that's about a $200,000 to $300,000 add to the 800. So there'll be two proposals coming, and we'll work with operations and maintenance to see, you know, what everybody feels is the most appropriate. We don't maintain brick, we never have, and we're not very good at it, so my recommendation would be to go with a similar product that we used here on this building, that seems to be holding up pretty well. I think some of the moisture issues you had in this facility have somewhat dissipated, or the complaints thereof, so just something, food for thought. But that's where the exterior envelope is, the brick, and the windows, and the roof.
Thank you. Ms. Patrica.
Thank you. I just have some overall questions. The first is, in terms of consistency in reporting, if you look at your first few, few slides, it does not tell us the number of student seats, and in some cases, we have an expansion going on, like the Hector Cafarada, for example, that's an expansion. If you could, going forward in these reports, show us the number of student seats, and if there is an expansion, what the original number was, and what the ultimate number will be?
We can do that.
That would be helpful, to me at least. That's the first thing. The second thing is, if I recall correctly, when you used to give these presentations to the board, at the end, you also had major maintenance projects, like roofing, and HVAC, and things like that, you didn't spend as much time on those, but you were reporting to the board on those, if I recall, am I correct?
You are correct.
So I, I would love to see that.
We have that. Right now, all of my projects, including the maintenance projects that we do, the large, that require design and engineering, we are working on over 50 products. I provide this, it's an update, it tells the status, where we are, design, procurement, design, construction, closeout, on schedule, non-on schedule, we can forward that, if the superintendent's desire. I share this with the chief operations officer, if you would like it to be shared with you, Dr. Savage, to distribute to the board members, we certainly can do it.
I'd like, I'd frankly like to see, be part of this report for the public to see as well, because I think that's where we kind of get ourselves into trouble, is when we're not looking at these things on a regular basis, and having the public view them to help us, to ask the questions we should- questions we should be asking. So we used to do it, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. It wasn't broke, and then we got dinged on a, on our own audit for not doing it. So I don't know why we don't just add it back in, if that's okay with the board.
It's, if you would like, if you're done with your questions on the presentation slides, which I think that was the last slide we had, we can actually bring up the tracking sheet to see. Oh, you can't pull it up?
I think it's a different...
I think it's best if we bring that up at a later time, just because of time purposes. Is that okay with everyone?
Totally.
Is that, okay? And I think that's a great point, Ms. Patrica. I've been taking school tours, and I think the things that are landing on the list, what we're talking about right now, you know, the people that live and are around that community, you know, South Fort Myers, or Fort Myers, or North Fort Myers, the, there's all kinds of things that have been, they've been waiting for.
Right.
And it would be great for them to be able to hear, how close are they? And how, and for the families of those schools to be able to hear, how close are we on roofing, a science lab, carpeting, et cetera? So I think that'd be helpful in future.
I mean, I can't tell you all of those items, other than the ones that I'm physically overseeing in my department. I think this document provides all of that information and status that you would like. If it's being supported by tax referendum money, then I think the dashboard is supposed to give you that indication of what work is occurring and in what fiscal year. So that's a tool you could use as well. And then this can tell you in real time that the jobs at my department is managing for the maintenance department.
That'd be great. Okay.
And we can add that to the end of the presentation.
I'm sorry?
Going forward, we can add this sheet to the end of the presentation.
And that's exactly where it used to be. And it got very little discussion, but it was, I mean, we were required to look at it to prep for the meeting. So I just think it's a good thing for us to have our eyes on. And then finally, you mentioned change orders, and I know that that's not in this presentation, but when you come in front of us with those change order reports, it's not just for construction, correct? It's also for major maintenance projects to include...
No, ma'am. My, my change order report is strictly my capital.
Just construction.
Work out of my department.
Okay. Very good. Those are my questions. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other questions?
I have one.
Yes.
It's not really a question, it's just a comment. As we're looking at Franklin Park, just to remind the board that this is our community school, so the building is done, but there's still additional work, working with Lee Health, working with United Way to bring that to fruition. Jen Robinson and Wally Cologne have been leading that, and we're hoping that everything will be done before the end of this semester to have those services for the community and our students.
That's my...
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You guys have a great day.
You're welcome. Next is our Civil Rights and Equity Guide, first reading. Dr. Jessica Duncan and Chuck Bradley will be presenting to us. Unfortunately, Jennifer Fuller is not here today and filling under the weather, but welcome to the both of you.
Good afternoon. Jessica Duncan, Executive Director of Student Services, here with Chuck Bradley. Like to thank you, board members, Superintendent Savage, Attorney Deputy Bruno, for the opportunity to review some of the updates to the Civil Rights and Equity Guide. Today, we'll start off by looking at the areas where we have had updates. So we will be in Title VI, Title VII, Title IX, looking at ADA, and then the updates to the equity contact information. For those of you who may not have been here, giving you a little bit of history, the school district guide was first developed in 2022 with significant stakeholder input. We had a number of meetings and community meetings where we, we worked on this guide. We presented it in, to the school board in June 2022, and at that point, it was a guide that schools could use. Today, we, will be our first review to look at this guide with the updates to be considered board policy.
So the purpose of this guide, the compelling why? The compelling why for this guide arose from a need to describe the civil rights guaranteed to, guaranteeing equal opportunities and protections under the law regardless of personal characteristics in our district. To achieve this, we realized that some need accommodations to ensure equitable access, and that the school district is required to ensure equitable access to all, especially those identified by protected classes. The sources of this guide were, were included, the US Constitu, goodness, the US Constitution, especially those parts that talk to us about speech, expression, and privacy, Florida statutes 1014.02 and Chapter 2022, originally House Bill 1557, the Florida Equity Law, and the school district code of conduct for students. The philosophy behind this guide is to ensure that we are communicating with our students, our teachers, and our parents, recognizing that together, they form the triangle of student success, and that together, they need to develop clear avenues of communication and collaboration, encouragement, and support.
So we look at the first updates, we're looking here at Title VI, and there is a reference to staff attire that was removed. This was just actually moved over to Title VII, where it was more appropriately placed in employment. The same is with hairstyle, that the staff reference was removed over to employment. Also, the reference to the Crown Act was removed, that we placed as pending legal reference that ever actually went through. It didn't change the section, we're still adhering to, as we wrote it, it didn't change the information, but just the reference to the pending legislation was removed. Additionally, in Title VI, we have a new section for discipline, and that students are not disciplined based on their race, color, or national origin, and the code of conduct is followed for disciplinary incidents. For Title VII, the changes were some combined sections on classroom, office, space, and personal items, so sort of all go together when we talk about those items, and we added a discussion or display of controversial issues, topics on opposing points of view have been promulgated by responsible opinion or likely to arouse both support and opposition in the community, and that's in compliance with our Board Policy 2240. So we added that clarification, added the board policy, and also added information about the recent filings in the 11th Circuit. In this area, we also, this is where the employment area, where we moved hairstyle, ethnic heritage, cultural attire, native language and dialect, all of that was moved here for staff. So anything that was previously in the Title VI is now in the Title VII, because this is where employment information is. It's more applicable here. And then again, for Title V, there is a discipline section. This is similar to the section we just discussed in VI, but this is for staff, for any necessary disciplinary action with staff, and that should be in accordance to the law and board policy, and again, without regard to an individual's race, color, or national origin. And for V, we added the email signature line. This information has been shared, but hasn't been, was not previously in the document. And this is a reminder to staff to use the district's signature lines in, in the template which is provided by communications, and you can add insignia, or like a logo for your school, work-related certifications, but the addition of any non-work-related elements, any insignia pictures or quotes would not be allowed just using the district's signature
Under Title IX, we added information about the Hope Scholarship, and especially in, in accordance with the 2024 House Bill, brings it into alignment, includes some information about where the Hope Scholarship has been amended by House Bill 1403 as of July 1st, 2024, and how that new mechanism will work.
So if I can just add to this piece, we did have some input from a community member, and I think it is important to note that this was from the DOE into the information. I think it was, it referred us to Step Up. However, the community member's concern was that this is really related to funding. I think in reviewing it further, we don't disagree. We're going to get some additional information before our second reading, but we think that the input that was provided has merit, so there is the possibility that we will either reword this, given some DOE input, or maybe eliminate it if it's just unnecessary for, for families to know.
As well, under Title IX, we removed the reference to gender identity under sharing information in accordance with the current injunction with Title IX law. We also changed the, and added to the restroom and locker room information, the reference to the Safety and Private Spaces Act, which introduces penalties for people using a public restroom or changing facility not aligned with their sex assigned at birth. For athletics, we added references to Florida Statute 1006.205, and we also added a discipline section under Title IX. This section on any necessary student, disciplinary action should be applied in accordance with the student code of conduct, and not based on an individual's sexual orientation or gender expression. For employees, disciplinary action should be applied in accordance with board policies, applicable statutes, and the professional code of conduct, and not based on an individual's sexual orientation or gender expression. Under the names and pronouns section, we added a reference to Florida Statute 10071. We added that a nickname, affirmed name may be used with a submission of a nickname, affirmed name form signed by the parent. Students who are 18 or older do not require a parent's signature. We added, school staff will be addressed by their legal name, and we added, employees, contractors, or students cannot be required to refer to another person using that person's preferred personal title or pronouns if such personal title or pronouns do not correspond to that person's sex. We also added, employees and contractors are prohibited from providing students his or her preferred personal titles or pronouns if such preferred personal title or pronouns do not correspond to his or her sex. Further, employees and contractors are prohibited from asking students to provide their preferred personal titles or pronouns in accordance with Florida Statute 10071.
In the area of ADA, for Americans with Disabilities Act, the update to this area was that all district communication will be ADA compliant. And then finally, for the equity contact, we had multiple people listed in different areas, but to ensure that the guide is, one, user-friendly, that users receive timely responses, and then also aligning with the Office of Civil Rights requirement to have a single point of contact, we have Jennifer Fuller listed as the contact. So one other update, also from community input, we have one section in the Hope Scholarship that talks about that it can be used for bullying or violence, and then it goes on to say, a complete list of incidents is found in Section 1002.40. The input was provided to go beyond bullying and violence, and in our brief discussion up to this point, because it is a user guide that should be friendly, and we do want people to not necessarily have to go to the section to find the information, we, we don't have an issue with including all of the things that Hope can be used for, because in our schools, we currently provide it for all of these incidents, if parents want to use it, and those are in addition to bullying and violence, battery, harassment, hazing, bullying and kidnapping, physical attack, robbery, sexual offenses, harassment, assault, battery, threat or intimidation, fighting as defined by the Department of Education in accordance with Statute 1006.09. So we will list all of those out, so that if someone is using this and they're reading that section, there's no ambiguity. It's, it's clear to the user. So at this point, we will open it up for superintendent's comments and any board discussion.
Thank you. Just wanted to give one other piece of information for the board. So we had our, today, our managerial meeting with our principals today, where all of our principals are on a call together, where we did go through the changes in terms of the equity guide and so forth, and also the implementation, talked through some of those, anything was new, basically, but also any particular issues, trying to give clear guidance on how they implement some of those aspects as well. So just want the board to be aware that we had that conversation today with our principals, and let them know that pending adoption today, that that would be something that, how to proceed accordingly, operationally.
Board members, do you have any comments or questions? Ms. Jordan?
I apologize. I tried to get all my questions answered yesterday. I had a whole list, but then I went back and I read the, the red lines, and I came back with more questions. So if I may, on page five, the classroom and office spaces, I know it refers to the board, board policy 2240, which is regarding classroom instruction. It does not, the board policy should reflect the State Board of Education's own clarification that, and that's part of that settlement agreement, and regarding like safe sticker space and all of that, and it is, that none of those are considered classroom instruction. So 2240, our policy is strictly for instructional purposes. Am I correct on that, Ms. Deputy Bruno?
Sounds...
I mean, I pulled it, and that's what it says.
So I'm, I'm not sure, I, so yes, you're correct, that the board policy 2240 is with regards to controversial issues within the classroom.
Right.
So this is basically taking that definition and putting it within the classroom and office spaces part of the guide to make sure that staff is aware that there is a board policy, one, that addresses classroom discussions that may be controversial, and to be careful with regard to controversial issues in the classroom, so that they are in adherence to the board policy.
Right. So it's, it's pertaining to instructional programming and not personal items, is what I'm referring to, because we just added personal items in this as, as one, classroom, office space, and personal items. And then we refer to board policy 20, 2240 as a reference to that, but does, it has nothing to do with personal items.
Okay. So that's going to be a very nuanced legal discussion in terms of personal items and what's in the classroom. What has been shared is pretty much every single thing in a school building is the property of the school board, from the walls, to the desk, to the computer that you're using. So that's why we have an example in terms of what personal item is. So I don't want to conflate the two, because those are two separate legal issues that you're referencing in terms of instruction. I, I guess I'm trying to follow, Ms. Jordan, what you're, you're asking.
Okay. So what I'm saying is, when I'm looking at this, and then Dr. Savage is saying that he had spoken to the principals, if I'm a principal, I'm looking at this saying that 2240, our board policy is saying that personal items, classroom, office space, all of this is the same. When it really has to do with, 2240 has to do with instruction, has not, does not have anything to do with personal, and that is based on the State Board of Education's own clarification and their settlement agreement.
Okay. So let's, let's be careful with the settlement agreement.
Okay.
Because the settlement agreement was very specific on a particular lawsuit that dealt with House Bill 1557. I believe it's the Educational Parents Rights Bill. That is speaking to a very specific set of circumstances with regards to instructing on sexual orientation and gender identity in the classroom. This guide is not a... This guide is not addressing that. That's not the purpose of this guide. This guide is addressing anything that can be in the classroom that may stir up a controversial issue. So I don't, again, I don't want to conflate the two, because these are some very nuanced legal issues, but don't mix them up. That settlement agreement has a very specific purpose for a very specific topic for a very specific law.
Okay. Then if I'm mistaken, then I will share this with you afterwards.
Okay.
So that way we can have clarification on that one. And then the other is, page, I just want to make sure that we're looking out for every single, every single student, every single parent, that we respect them, and we're, you know, making sure that we're protecting their rights, all of them. So, and then the names and pronouns, where school staff will.
What page?
I'm sorry, page seven. School staff will be addressed by their legal name, legal name. My name, my legal name is Deborah, but I, if you call me Deborah, I know you don't know me. So where does that lie? Because my name is, I go by Debbie. So just with that saying, it's addressing this, and it's in policy that you must use your legal name, I want to make sure that that is not, and I know you and I talked briefly about it, but we're now telling school staff that you must use your, I don't know if you're Chris or you're Christine, or, I mean, what does that look like to us?
So through the chair, if I may, I believe you're referencing page seven.
Page seven.
That says, "School staff will be addressed by their legal name." So the, and I don't know if Chuck and Jesse want to address that or you want me to.
The student part of that, what we do right now?
I think she's speaking about the staff.
Staff, the staff portion. So we do have staff that are transitioning in our schools that are transgender, and so by law, we need to make sure that they're referred to by their legal name in school. It's connected to their, the student's transcript, and it's also connected to their certification and Social Security. So with our staff, we do require that if there's going to be any change of name in the classroom, that they pursue that through the legal process of the legal name change through the court of law.
But I think with the other piece about a derivative, we did have with our student section, if you have a name with a known derivative, you could use that. If you used a nickname or something that was drastically different from that, we had for students, a nickname or a firm name form, but if it was a derivative, so if you were Deborah or Debbie, those are known derivatives, that we did not have any additional paperwork for.
I'm just making sure that it's clear for everybody.
And I think that we could add the same, yes, I agreed, and I think we touched on that briefly earlier, that we could add that same for adults if it was a known derivative.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then the other one was page eight. Okay, so page eight was sharing information regarding sexuality. So by removing, and there may be a reason why we did, so by removing N or gender identity, does this now say that we can share that information? Because we remove that as we cannot, so.
So part of the legal dilemma that we have is that the new Title IX regulation, so let me go back and just make sure I explain this clearly. Title IX, of course, prevents and protects against discrimination based on sex in the education setting. The definition of sex is what has been, something that has been discussed. An executive order was issued, I believe in 2021, that included gender identity as part of that definition of sex, with direction to the United States Department of Education to create some regulations to address that. They did that in April of 2024, and that has been challenged. At this point, those regulations are not enforceable in the state of Florida. That is why the references to gender identity has been removed from the guide.
So are you telling me that, so then the privacy, they have no privacy then? So I'm just going to say it, a trans child would not have, because that would be considered more gender identity, they would not have privacy?
I don't understand what you mean, Ms. Jordan.
I just want to make sure that everybody is covered when we're doing, when we're saying privacy, the school, you know, must hold, uphold the privacy rights of parents and their children, that's all children. But I feel like if we remove part of it, that's taking. And this is based on conversations I've had with, when you said public input, public input. Blowing my phone up. So that's why I'm sharing.
So first and foremost, let's make sure that we understand that the School Board of Lee County, the School District of Lee County does not discriminate on the basis of any characteristics to include gender identity. So if there is something that is occurring that is harassment, bullying, et cetera, that will be dealt with. This particular section, remember, is referencing Title IX specifically. It's not referencing all of our other discrimination policies that we have or other protections that we have. This is strictly for Title IX and the things that would fall under Title IX, and that's why that language is not there. All of our students will be protected.
Thank you. And then my last one was the restrooms. I just think that we, and I know we've had this conversation multiple times, how do we start incorporating restrooms into our new builds so that everybody, if they need a single stall without having permission to go use one, would have the right to use that? And I could even go back to my son, who always felt like he could not do that because somebody knew what his shoes looked like. And I just feel that every child, or whoever it is that really needs to have a private stall, we need to make sure that we have, we don't have a place in this building even for that. So I just think that going forward, that's something that we really should be looking at, that we have that ability for, if I decided I felt like I needed more privacy, if he felt, whoever that looks like, that we would have that opportunity to give them that privacy.
So that's a very good point, Ms. Jordan. It's my understanding that where we could, placards have been changed to make them unisex bathrooms for single stalls in buildings. And it's also my understanding that the new prints for new architecture in our buildings are including unisex bathrooms.
Thank you. That's my questions. I appreciate it.
Ms. Patrica.
Yeah, ma'am.
Ms. Morgan, do you have anything?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
That staff would need Board is direction as to whether or not they can move this to second reading with any corrections.
Staff, do we, or excuse me, staff, or do we agree that this can be moved to second reading? Thumbs up.
Are they fixing that one?
Ms. Patrica.
Yeah, I just, if this is a guide, right? This is a guide. This is not a policy. This is not a requirement of, why is the board even approving this? Why are we even involved? Why is this not operational? If I may ask that question, please.
So this originated as a guide, but through this process, so this would be our first read, to use this as part of our policy, in conjunction with our other policies. So today's the first reading, so we heard your input. What we do now, and we've had community input, we'll take that back, revise, send you those, and schedule for the second one, and then I believe it goes to the second reading, then the board meeting for final approval, where it would be then considered policy.
So what, inside a policy, there'll be a link to the guide?
So through the chair, if I may, no, there will not be a link to the guide. So think of this almost like a Student Code of Conduct, something similar along those lines. This will be a policy within, and stand on its own, within itself.
All right. Well, that being said, I do have to go back and ask a question, if I may, through the chair. So going back to the privacy issue, on page eight, "School personnel will not disclose any information about a student's sexual orientation or questions they may have about their sexual orientation to third parties unless the student is requesting accommodations or it is absolutely necessary." That means that my high school child can go and have a conversation with his trusted adult inside a school building if he's questioning his sexual identity without fear that that trusted adult inside the building is going to tell his parents, correct?
So I'll follow up with what our current guidance is. So we do talk, we, we train our schools that if a student is questioning their identity or their orientation, they are to be directed to speak with a school counselor. The school counselor does instruct the student at that time, if we continue with this conversation, I will need to involve your parent.
Okay, so kids can't go to a school counselor if they're questioning their sexual orientation without fear of parents being told, even in high school?
At this time, they are told that they can speak to them a certain number of times, but if they, at a certain point, they will need to involve the parent.
So they're, so if a kid is really, what is that point? Mr. Bradley, what, like, how much freedom do kids have?
So we have.
I mean, in elementary school, I get it.
Correct.
If a kindergarten kid is walking into a counselor and saying, "I'm questioning my sexual identity or my sexual orientation," not identity, orientation, the parent should be involved immediately. But if a high school kid is talking about it, like, I don't know that these rules should be applied across the board for every kid of every age in the same way. So tell me the point at which a child can no longer have this conversation with a trusted adult inside a building without the parents being informed. Please.
So I, I'll have to get back to you with the exact number, but I do know that we, we did quantify this at one point, and I, your point is well taken. Age should probably be a condition of that. We are trying to remain compliant with state law as well.
Okay. All right. I would really, I'm very concerned for kids who are, and I see it in here, or it is absolutely necessary, mental health, emotional, physical health, or well-being, but if a child has a genuine concern that disclosure of this to a parent will lead to abuse, then we have a responsibility, right?
We do, and we do say that if there is a genuine fear of disclosure to a parent, that the school will contact appropriate authorities. So we will contact DCF if needed, and, but we will work with that student to make sure that that student is safe.
But that can lead to other problems with mom and dad.
It could.
Contacting DCF can be a rabbit hole that ends up being far worse for the child.
Correct.
I'd like to see some kind of, some consideration for the age of the student.
So if I may, this is, this part is stemming from HB 1557. In a child's emotional health, and there's some other criterias, that the parent must be notified. So as Mr. Bradley was saying, at some point, you know, there may be a casual conversation, "I'm feeling this," but if the child is persisting, keeps going to the counselor, at some point, the parent's going to be notified. It doesn't matter if it's elementary, middle, or high school. Now, the statute also says, if there is concern that there's going to be abuse in the home, then the staff has the liberty to make sure they call DCF and disclose. So that's, that's within the confines of the statute. That's what we have to really walk that fine line with.
All right. I appreciate that. And if you could give me a sense of how long that child can discuss casually without involvement of DCF or families, that'd be great. Thank you.
Mr. Parsons.
I don't want any consideration for age. They're minor children. Okay. And so, in that aspect, I think legally and everything else, and as a parent, unless there's fear and that they're covered that, I think they should be notified. I don't think we should say, "Well, anyone 16 and over, if they decide they want to do that, you don't have to tell a parent." I think, one, I think that would be against statute, and two, I just don't think that's right. That's all.
Thank you. For the record, I agree, Mr. Parsons. Ms. Giavennelli?
I was just going to say that until the child's 18, the parent is the legal guardian. So I don't know how you could exclude a parent whatsoever, because the law is the law on that. So I would disagree that there's an 16, or 17, or 18, or 15. It doesn't matter. The parent is in charge of their child, and they need to be aware of the situation so that they can handle their family situation appropriately. And that's up to the parent. That's not up to anybody at this board table.
Just for the record, to make sure that the board is clear as to the language of the statute, and also for members of the public that may not be familiar, the statute specifically says that a school district may not adopt procedures or student support forms that prohibit school district personnel from notifying a parent about his or her student's mental, emotional, or physical health, or well-being, or change in related services. And that's where the, how many times is it casual or actually getting services comes in. Change in related services or monitoring that encourage or have the effect of encouraging a student to withhold from a parent such information. So it's not about age, it's not about, "Are you in elementary or high school?" The statute is very, very clear in terms of those provisions and what can and cannot be done.
Thank you. I think we have decided with nodding of head to move on to second reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great afternoon. Next is policy review, first reading. Attorney DuPuy Bruno is going to be presenting to us. We're just going to give her a few moments to set up.
Thank you.
I know.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are there any questions? Are you ready? Thank you, Madam Chair. With me, I have Ms. Brophy, Benedita Brophy. And are there any questions from the board?
All right. I'm going to start with Mrs. Morgan. Ms. Morgan, do you have any questions for Attorney DuPuy Bruno? If we could just get confirmation, if she's still on the line. Anyone else on the dais have any questions for the attorney? Mr. Fisher?
It's actually a question for the board, so I don't know if you want me to hold that until later, or about one of the policies.
I.
I don't know what preference of one is.
Go ahead and proceed.
Okay. Can we bring up Policy 131, please? Which is legislative policymaking. Under policy development, I'm going to ask this board, and we've had a prior discussion on this, in order for us, the last on the policy development, any extraordinary vote of the board, one more than majority, essentially a supermajority, shall be required to make exceptions, amendments, or additions to or delete adopted board policies. Going to ask my fellow board members that I think we should amend that policy to set it as majority. The reasons for that, and if I recall, if anyone can correct me on that, we're the only board within this state that does it like that. I believe they weren't able to find anywhere else in the country. One of our primary statutory duties is obviously implementing and affecting policy. I don't believe for something like that, as our purpose is being essentially a legislative body, that we should go to an extraordinary vote in order to change policy, since that is one of our primary roles within this. State legislature, for example, is just a majority. I understand there are certain things that require supermajority, such as setting aside rules, and I would not disagree with that. But as our primary action as policymakers, I don't see why we need to come to that method. I don't see why in order to change a policy, that we need to have a supermajority. In order to add a policy, it's just a majority. So in effect, we could pass a policy by the majority tonight that conflicts with the current policy, even so, we couldn't amend or remove that. So I'd ask my fellow board members to consider that motion going forward, especially as we're looking at a elected superintendent going forward. Thank you.
I agree with that. Mr. Parsons, then Ms. Giavennelli, did you have something?
I was just going to say I support that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was just wondering how we would go about changing that, since it's in our policy. We have to have a supermajority to change this policy. We have to have a supermajority to change this policy, to make it not a supermajority.
Correct.
But I am for it, so. And what would be the timeline for that? Can we do it today, to amend that, or?
This is just first reading, so.
So, if the board would like to amend that policy this evening, a motion can be made, and you do need the supermajority at that point to change it. The other thing is, when this comes to second reading, we can pull this policy and do the same thing, but if you want to do that today, you can.
I think it probably would be better to try to do it sooner than later. I mean, especially since we're the only district, probably in the nation, that has this.
Mr. Fisher, you want to follow up?
I'd like to ask just again what the temperature of the board is for this tonight, if there's any comments, questions, concerns.
Oh, I missed the comment, so please restate.
Ms. Morgan, I'm asking for, under 131 legislative policymaking, that instead of requiring for an amendment or deletion of a board policy, that we move to amend it to a majority. My reasoning for that is, as a legislative body, that is one of our primary purposes. We're the only school district in the state that does it like that, based on the research we were previously told. And, as I said, I believe it's even in conflict that we can create policy with a majority, but we cannot amend or move policy unless a supermajority. And my, again, reasoning is, I understand there are things that are purposes of a supermajority, such as, you know, suspending rules, which I agree with, but it's something that is our essentially main core purpose, I don't see why we need an extraordinary vote. I mean, the Florida legislature, for example, does, is, is a simple majority as well.
Ms. Morgan, I'll-
Well, I'll go back to our board protocol, which is that we don't make motions on the same day and act on them unless it's, it's extraordinary circumstances. I, I don't see why the motion has to be made and acted on today. I'd be happy to consider it at another meeting, but I, I'm just opposed to this notion that we want to do something, and we do it right away, and we don't have the opportunity to reflect or consult on our own, as you have done. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher, follow up?
I was actually not asking for a motion today, Ms. Morgan. I was merely stating, since we were reviewing 131 as part of the processes today, to bring it up, to see what the temperature of the board was. I was not asking for a motion today, I was asking to explore this and see what our fellow board members thought about this.
Thank you.
Mr. Persens.
Is there a way to, as you said, pull this from this, or we have to go back and-
So, right-
I mean, not change it now, but, but just not do the first reading on it, or?
So, this is first reading, and we can make the change, like we've done with other policies, where we made changes, because there is language here that has been properly noticed as part of the rulemaking process, so we want to make sure we stay in compliance. But we can make the changes, and when it's time to vote on it for the public hearing, the second reading, we'll vote on that separately, so we can have the supermajority vote.
Okay. I think that's the route we should go. I mean, it's, we're not voting on it tonight at all, so that would give Ms. Morgan plenty of time to look at it, and all of us, so I would say, maybe if we could get a consensus.
With a thumbs up, that will work. Okay. You have your direction? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding policy? Mr. Persens.
I just want to commend you on the AI policy. I read it, it sounds pretty good. I mean, that's a whole new area, and I'm sure we're going to run into a lot of things, but we really needed a policy, so just want to thank you for that. I didn't really have any questions on it.
Thank you, Mr. Persens. I have to give a lot of credit to Neola on that one.
Makes sense.
Ms. Jordan?
And I know, I came yesterday, met with Mr. Puy Bruno with all my questions regarding policies, and the one that I was concerned about was 10165, 0166, the removal of briefings. And when I asked, I wasn't sure if that happened the day that I, I missed, or I was sleeping through something, because I never recall us saying that we were going to remove a briefing or a workshop and just have, go down to two meetings. So, that's my question. And I, and I said I would bring this up today, because I wasn't sure of it, so I don't know where that lies.
So, what's your, what's your actual question?
That is my question. Where, where did that come from? Where did the removal of briefing come from in 0165 and 0166? Where did that, where did the removal of briefings come from for this policy to be taking place?
I'm happy to. Yep, I'm happy to.
Dr. Savage?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, our understanding was that through the engagement we've had with the board members, and attempting to try to reduce our meetings and bring us in line with what other districts and how they operate, as we've analyzed in the state, in terms of what we find other districts do, they do not hold briefings. They hold workshops and action meetings, and in far less number than what we presently do, which is our six a month, two briefings, two workshops, two action meetings. So, bringing us in line with other districts, they hold a workshop. The, the critical issue for us, as we've been modifying, and we've attempted to do this on several occasions so far, is we've had to retain the title briefing strictly so that we could continue to offer public comment, because then there was concern that perhaps the public would feel like we were limiting their ability to speak and give voice to it, whereas in other districts, many times, they are still afforded public comment at some stage of the workshop, so that the public would have that opportunity. However, in our policy, we could not continue to call them workshop, because that did not allow for that piece, and so all it's doing is kind of reflecting that adjustment in practice, so that as we attempt to set a new calendar year, in November, we set the meetings for the year that would be consistent with what other districts in the state do. However, again, this is all designed for feedback from the board, in case it's inconsistent with what the majority of the board would want. That's, this is that opportunity to give voice to it. That's my best answer to that.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, but, and yes, we've had conversations about this, I know, like, in our one-on-ones, but never, I don't recall us saying, "Okay, this is what we want to do, let's..." Because to me, I feel like, and it has nothing to do with, I, I want people to be able to come and speak, but I also want to make sure that when we are here, having workshops, briefing, whatever you want to call them, you can call them whatever you want, that we are having conversation, because this is our only opportunity that we do have to speak collectively. Otherwise, we don't have conversations about anything that's taken place. So, for me, when we remove something like that, and just because we have the word briefing in there, does not mean that we have a briefing if there's nothing to be briefed on. But for us to remove that and not have the opportunity, I just want to make sure that we are not taking something away and losing the ability to have conversation with one another about important things that are taking place for this district. We are just too big of a district not to, to be having that conversation.
Okay, Mr. Fisher, then Mr. Persens.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have had discussions up here multiple times about that. I know I brought it up, Ms. Giavennelli, Ms. Langford Fleming, I know even Dr. Savage, we had that discussion. I think it even went back to the prior superintendent as well. I have a, a question for that in regards to Dr. Savage. Just because these are moved to workshops doesn't necessitate, if need be, that we could add more workshops, correct?
That is, through the chair, that is correct.
Okay, because I mean, I, being on this board, we're almost two years, I still struggle, based on the definition of board protocol, of telling you, actually, outside of public input, what the real-world definition between a briefing and a workshop is. So, I, I don't, I see this as a no-brainer, so, thank you.
Mr. Persens.
Maybe I'm assuming something. I would assume we would go over the agenda questions during the workshop? Would that still be part of it, or?
Presently, that is the, how we adapt. I think that's really at the board's discretion, and, and really what you feel meets the need, because obviously, we also do the one-on-one briefings, which in most districts, like, for example, the State Board of Education, their briefings are conducted as your briefings, which are one-on-one briefings. That's how they receive their information, that's how they are briefed. The workshop is actually where the board has the opportunity to have conversation, and in some places, public comment or not, but, but in our particular case, that presently, we don't have that ability, so it's really the only distinction, the ability to then utilize that meeting in a way that is consistent with what other districts do. That's really the only reflective change here, is just removing a briefing which does not exist for other districts. They don't have that function the way we do presently, so it's just that aspect of it. That's absolutely the, the intent of this change in language, unless I'm mistaken on, on what's been added.
Okay, I just know we all send questions in, and I think it's important to be answered in the public, so as long as that's still part of it, I'm, I'm fine.
Yes, historically, that has occurred in the workshop. That's the setting where it's been done, but again, that's, that's at the board's discretion of whether you want those done as public, whether you want your answers handled. Like, for example, Miami Dade does one action meeting, one workshop, not necessarily a workshop monthly either, but like Collier County, for example, they do one action meeting, their questions are answered in the board member one-to-one, so they'll, they'll actually go through and give those pieces and the one-to-ones, so you'll get an answer to any item, but it's two weeks in advance of your meeting, so that way, you'd have a chance, you know, to get questions answered before you'd come and act on that particular. So, it's, again, different districts do it in different ways, it really is up to the board's will of how, what you feel is the best way to go about conducting your business.
Ms. Giavennelli?
So, if we go to workshops, this would also eliminate the, at briefings, you could only, the topic, they could only speak, public speaking can only speak on a topic. This would allow them, at any workshop, they could speak on anything, right? It wouldn't have to be on topic, per se.
I'm going to direct that to the attorney, is that correct? Okay, Mr. Puy Bruno?
So, the only thing that was changed in these policies is to remove a briefing and just leave the workshop, and the same guidelines in terms of public comment during briefings would apply to workshops. So, there's, there, it's not allowing everyone to just talk about everything at a workshop.
Okay. Okay, because at workshops, the public can't speak at all.
Correct.
So, that's what would change?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I support it. Thank you.
Okay, so, moving, I guess we need to decide as a board if we are okay with, you want to restate what your first comment was, Mr. Fisher, about the, or, excuse me, Ms. Jordan, you want me to, you want to restate that so that we can?
I personally feel that if we are going to go to two, and I, I hear what Dr. Savage says about other places get their one-on-ones through their superintendent, me personally, I believe we are here to do a job, and we, and yes, our job is the action meeting, that's when we do the business of the board. However, we need to be out there and make sure we have conversation, and that we, that the community can see that we are actually really working, and we do hear what they have to say, and we are having conversations, because from what I hear out there, it's like, "You guys never talk about anything." Well, that's true, we don't talk too much up here, because we get a lot of our stuff done behind the door with the superintendent or the attorney, separately, not together, collectively. Make sure, say that right, on our one-on-ones, but I still believe that people want to see us working and, and have it. I personally have to have conversation, because that's who I am. So, I don't know about all of you, but I know I need to have that conversation and know how you all think and what is going on.
Mr. Fisher?
Just a clarification question. We are not addressing the number of meetings per month, correct? Just the mode and method for workshops?
Correct. There's nothing in the policy that addresses how many meetings, time of meetings, or anything like that. It's just, literally, just removing briefings and just naming it workshops.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Patrica?
Yeah, I just, I see this as a distinction without a difference. We're just removing the word briefing from, and we're still going to have workshops, and, I mean, if we're up to me, we meet once a month and never again, you know? I mean, part of, part of our responsibility as board members is to digest what is said behind closed doors, and be able to explain it to the public when we are stopped in a grocery store, or we're at a grand opening of a school, or whatever. It's, it's not, you know, the whole asking a question for the public to hear is serving 300 people in public, the 300 that watch board meetings. This is not the forum for public interaction. The forum for public interaction is when we're out in the community. In, in my opinion, we meet too much, and so getting away from, taking the word briefing out is a step in the right direction. Fortunately, I'm not going to get the benefit of the fewer meetings, because I'll be gone by the time you guys get down to fewer meetings, but I really just don't, I see this as a distinction without a difference, until you guys decrease the number of meetings.
Mr. Persens?
Well, I think today is a good example of communication between the board members. We've had discussion on construction, and policies, and everything else today, and I think that's, that's good. We know where everybody is, and we gave some direction to whoever was presenting, and what to go forward with. So, like I say, I, I agree with Ms. Patrica, I don't see a, a big difference. There will be some months that, because of budgets and other things, we may have to have more meetings, but I think overall, I, I think this is fine.
I agree. Okay. All right, thank you.
One policy that I did want to bring to the board's attention, I have recommended change based on Mr. Rechenbacher's presentation. It's 6340. We added some language about when construction had to come back to the board and give presentations, phase one, phase two, but the policy actually says that the board shall be provided monthly updates on all projects. Given what Mr. Rechenbacher said about bi-monthly, that you, there may not be enough change for monthly, I'd like to recommend that we change that to bi-monthly, if that's okay with the board.
I'm getting a few nodding heads. Ms. Patrica?
What was the recommendation in the audit?
I don't remember.
If it was monthly, I think we need to leave it as monthly. And, and we could make it a, nothing in here requires a monthly oral presentation, right? You could do a bi-monthly oral and bi-monthly written, but, but that, to me, is dependent upon what the finding in the audit was.
So, we'll look at the audit. The only thing, I would be careful with written or presentations and one-on-ones for this particular policy, because it says the board, which means it has to be all of you at the same time. But we will look. If it says monthly, we'll keep it there, and if it says, if it doesn't, we'll, we'll make it bi-monthly, if that's the will of the board.
Yeah, I mean, it can be, it can be provided as backup materials for the public to consume as well at a workshop, or, you know, it doesn't have to be, it can be provided to the board in a public way.
The board wants me to move in that direction?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
And do, is there a consensus for us to move these policies to second reading?
Board, what's our consensus? Can we move this to second reading? I'm getting majority of thumbs up, head nod, yes.
And then, there were some that were just pre-briefed. For example, the AI policy, can we move those then to first reading? Thank you, board.
Yes, thank you. Next on the agenda is the District Advisory Council. I'm going to just lead this discussion. Board, Board Policy 9140 states that the purpose of the District Advisory Council, or the DAC, is to receive information and provide actionable feedback to improve the experience of our stakeholders in our schools, on our buses, and at the district. Per policy, before the beginning of each academic quarter, the superintendent is to inform the board of the quarterly input subject for DAC that he believes, or she believes, would be beneficial to the work of the district, and seek a consensus from the board on that topic. Dr. Savage, do you have a subject that you believe would benefit from DAC's input?
I do, Madam Chair, and, and that would be this, a potential adaptation of the law that requires us to go to new school start times, to basically bring, that is such a massive lift for the school system, that we just, in DAC, provide such rich feedback, because it's the nature of the constituency group that, that fulfills it, connects to every single one of our schools, it, it hits a variety of different levels. So, you have business owners, you have community leaders, you have parents, but it also ensures that all voices, really, that we impact, really, at, at each individual school, those unintended consequences are there, and DAC has given us so much over the years, that we just think that for something that's this massive, that would be a major opportunity to really dig into that issue, and we think that would be a valuable use of the committee's time, but we'd love to hear some board feedback on that as well, just in case, that's something that would be, because it is a pretty big lift for the system, and it is very big politically, in terms of, it can be very disruptive, people don't realize that it's a state law issue, that it's not just a local decision, but that how it impacts things, so we just think that it's a perfect opportunity to dig in deep on one really major issue, and then if they do come to closure on that, certainly, we could come back, but that would be the one that we would really advise, multiple presentations, multiple layers, multiple lenses, athletics, the different pieces, the bus transportation, there's so many different layers of how it impacts our organization, so that would be my- So that would be my recommendation for this, uh, board to at least consider as a topic.
Okay. Thank you. Board members, do you have any comments? Ms. Patrica?
Yeah, I love that, um, and I love that I'm not gonna have to make any decisions on that. But my concern there is, uh, after-school activities, uh, like club sports, for example, swimming. I'm thinking about swimming. My daughter used to swim before and after school. Um, her coaches were able to make that 5:00 AM practice and then change and go to work. But if we're pushing back start times, what's that gonna do to the morning practice and the ability of professionals who are volunteering their time or making next to nothing to do these prac? How do we get those stakeholders involved through the District Advisory Council? I, I don't know how to do it other than to, um, send out a communication, um, and encourage them to start to get involved in their local schools, school advisory committee, um, because even if they're not, uh, official members, they can provide feedback during those meetings that will then be brought to the district. Does that make sense? It's either that or a task force specific to, um, outside stakeholders that wouldn't normally be involved in a SAC. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Dr. Savage?
Uh, I think it's an excellent point, uh, and because that's, that's a huge part of this, is those specific groups that really are negatively impacted. One advantage of the DAC structure is that we don't have to just have it be live in those meetings, only that group can even react to aggregated feedback of that nature. So we could, for example, try to target and push through the SACs folks who, who qualify for that exact subclass that you kind of identified, allow them to give us information via like a thought exchange, something like that, that gives us issues, what they work around, things like that, and then have those groups react to that. So it's not just us. It really is kind of acting in that kind of format. So I think it's an excellent point, uh, but we'd have to kind of capture a lot of those subgroups that you're, like, that is a great example of one, but if there were others, we'd want the DAC to be reacting so it isn't just the seven of us and then our administration, but really the whole community's really reacting to it in that organized way.
I mean, this disrupts entire industries that surround and support our students. So I think we need to consider that in, in figuring out what the feedback is.
Thank you. Mr. Persons?
Oh, boy. I don't like that law. So I think we should petition to have them change. I think we should. I know.
I agree.
When you have a daughter in the legislature, that's really going out there. But the problems are huge and I know there's been some districts that have done this. What I would like to see if we could reach out and find, have, I mean, the main reason for this was that the high school students with an extra hour of sleep would do better. I highly doubt that. I think they'll go to bed an hour later. Okay? I mean, that's just, that's just how kids are. So I, I don't see any up plus, you know, of it, but I think we need some facts to back that up. I mean, it was a great selling point and it sounded good, but I don't know in reality if it is. And if it is, then I'm, I'm all for it. I mean, I will go online and, and, I mean, to the public and say that too. I just have my sneaky feelings, it's not. I don't know how many districts have already implemented this.
Yeah, I would say, uh, your, your instincts are definitely were echoed when the superintendents met, the most recent, we have another one coming up, so we'll hear more about it, but at the most recent joint FADS, FSBA, uh, there were a number of superintendents that were talking about this. Well, they acknowledged the intentionality of it, but were questioning the wisdom of it in actual application. So I think that's one, one, one thing that we don't really know though presently, uh, that I think a DAC assignment or something to that effect, to give them that body of work that could be helpful is what is the overall kind of reaction that we're hearing? What is it? We could start bringing data back to this district, have some more substantive conversation that's, public could participate. Uh, those are things that we could do in that venue and you start to hear, how, what are the other sentiments between elementary, middle parents, high school parents? What is the prevailing sentiment? And that becomes powerful feedback we could share. So again, great, great points, um, but I'll, I'll certainly be willing to bring back at the next upcoming FADS, uh, which is in a, a couple of weeks, uh, what, I'll, I'll raise this issue among the colleagues in here for the ones who have been implementing for a full year, because there are some, to get some earlier turns of how is it working for them, what do they think so far? And I'll bring that information back, uh, the end of September, early October to this board.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Patrica, then Ms. Jordan?
To that point, um, there was a presentation at FSBA last time and there were a bunch of districts there who said the educational outcomes were completely unchanged by changing the start times. So that's anecdotal, I know. You, you would have to probably do more of a nationwide sort of crunching of data, but here in Florida, there was, there was no change at all, but there was a massive disruption to the community. And I am not remotely opposed, Mr. Persons, to adding that to our legislative platform because there's nothing wrong with admitting that, um, while well-intentioned, uh, bills, um, unintended consequences far outweigh the potential positives. There's nothing wrong with our legislature admitting that.
Ms. Jordan?
Ms. Patrica just said what I was gonna say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing no other comments, um, what's that? Oh, yeah. Oh, Ms. Morgan, thank you. Do you have any comments?
I have none, thank you.
Okay, thank you for reminding me. So, since right now legislative, we haven't been able to have our legislative platform discussions, um, I think it appears that that would be the best thing for the DAC to, um, a great topic for this quarter. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Savage? Next is the agenda review for this evening's meeting. Dr. Savage, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the first question that we had was on item I two, which was the approval to piggyback the Duval County Public Schools, uh, the fingerprinting services. Uh, so the questions were, why do we pay for medical students and before and after-school program employees to be fingerprinting? We do not pay for other applicant updated candidate fingerprinting. Last year, what was the expenditure for fingerprinting medical students and after-school program employees? With the teacher shortage, why would we not reimburse those that pass the interview process? Of course, put parameters on it, reimburse them after 120 days. If we're paying for one group, why not pay for teachers as we do have such a retention issue? Uh, so, um, all great questions related to this. So one thing is, we don't necessarily have all the information related to, um, the expenditure in terms of the, the, the numbers, but once we have that data, we'll be starting to share it. But I did want to highlight that through our budget processes here, which is actually one of the very first things our chief, uh, human resource officer wanted to do and did actually get, um, through that process was to, um, for all of our new employees to have their fingerprinting coverage so as not to incur any costs. Um, and so that's something that her team has been working on and they're working with a third-party provider to try to get that across the finish line of what that would look like just to actually implement it. So that was something that was already being done, uh, it just hadn't yet been fully implemented cuz that third-party piece and working through the piece of that. So they're on it. Appreciate it. Do you want to give some kudos there? Uh, the next one was just, uh, item I three, which is the approval to renew the agreement with the Imperium Consulting LLC for insurance, you know, our managers, our FEMA claims and risks management support. Um, so the question was, the contract states, quote, "The consultant shall provide invoices on a monthly basis to the school board." Um, and then there was just concern that those hadn't been provided. Also, if we had an in-house board auditor, this would be one of their jobs to see if we're receiving, uh, with an elected superintendent, a couple of months, the auditor needs to be in place where we stand. So just want to quick give an, and answer to this. So in fact, the, the consultant does provide their invoices on a monthly basis to us. However, it is, as, as per the terms of the contract, but the board is really recognized as a legal entity, as it is a legal entity for all of our contracts. And so while, and while that may be the interpretation in this case, the reality is like a lot of these invoices, they're, they're very business-oriented invoices, they come operationally. So certainly we would have the ability, uh, to provide all of those invoices that have been provided, uh, to attest that they in fact have been providing them on, on the proper schedule. Um, they just didn't, it's, it's to the board via the superintendent, like when the board executes, the superintendent executes all of related documents, it's simply that piece. So they have done that, um, and we will provide those if the board members would like to receive all those invoices. We're happy to share those with you as well. Yep, ma'am, follow-up?
Actually, my point was really that if we had a board auditor, that would be something they would, that I think that they would receive, and that was really my, a point to that. And if there was an issue, then that, the board auditor would bring it to the board, but since they would work for the board. But that, that really was my intent. Thank you.
Oh, my pleasure. Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, the next item is J two, approval to adopt the job descriptions for the operations division. Uh, the question was, is this a new position or were there changes to job descriptions? If so, what were the changes? Uh, so just to recap, that, you know, this job description was brought to the board briefing on, uh, August 21st. There is currently one director opening in transportation and through their recruitment for this position, uh, they looked at the director job descriptions because they were having difficulty attracting a full complement of qualified candidates. Obviously, you want to get the best candidate, so if you're not getting a full complement, you're getting maybe only two people who meet these qualifications. The challenge is then you don't want to lower your expectations, you want that full complement. So in part of their analysis, um, they updated the present format, lowered the requirement from a master's to a bachelor's degree, which was consistent with, in alignment with other director positions in the district. They also lowered the years of experience from five to three, um, be, in, in a large-scale mass transportation. So trying to broaden that, so perhaps they have public sector mass transportation experience, um, those types of aspects. Because getting a sitting, you know, just to give you a quick example, not all other districts, even large ones necessarily, they may only have one director. So you'd essentially be trying to attract someone to leave a sitting, large district to come to us, in which case we may be swan. In fact, some of our recruitment efforts did exactly that and we had a difficult time getting the person who was the sole director in some of these other districts to want to come, uh, to our district in that pay, in that case. So it's just really an attempt to try to get a larger pool. You don't necessarily want your minimum quals to be something that is hot, completely restricting your ability. You want to cast a, a wider net and then allow the, the best candidates to rise through the process of the actual hiring process, not being on its face overly restricted where you end up getting folks who maybe have many years of experience but aren't necessarily the highest quality applicants as well. So it's just one of those aspects and so this reflects that piece. There was an error though in the briefing that, cuz the follow-up question was, I would want to see the changes redlined. That was something that was intended to be done. They have gone back to get that updated, so the, um, redline has been attached for you to LLC and that's why you have that as well. So great, all, all good questions as well. Follow-ups to that were, please advise if there are any director openings in transportation. If so, how many and where are the openings? If it's been advertised, will you advertise after these changes are being made? So there is currently one director in transportation open. Uh, this position would be re-advertised with the new job description if the board approves this job description this evening. Follow-ups on that, after the changes, do all directors meet the qualifications of the new job description? I cannot help but notice that based on the new job description, current school administrators nor district administrators will be qualified. This is alarming. It's one of the best transportation directors we had was a prior school administrator. I don't think we should be closing the door of opportunity for administrators to advance in the district. Looks like this change is just that. Please correct me if I'm wrong. So here, the changes that were made to the requirements of this job should attract more qualified applicants. It did not raise the requirements to make people not qualified, it lessened the requirements. All job descriptions have the following statement, quote, "Relevant work experience or education may be substituted to satisfy minimum qualifications." And I, and I just want to highlight, uh, we have had some extremely successful examples. One of our current compound directors who's now working in the West Zone was a former administrator, has done an excellent job, really, uh, working very hard out in that particular area. That's a, a great example of that piece. So certainly we don't want to diminish it. In fact, some of the prior applicants that were not allowed to interview were school administrators that couldn't because they hadn't been in transportation for that many years. And so this should make that easier for us, not more challenging in that case, to answer those questions. So those were the questions for that, yes?
My only concern is that, um, the directors there now, they had to have a master's degree. So now you would be hiring someone that has a bachelor's degree to do the same job with someone that has master. So I don't want it, you don't want to, you know, lessen their education value.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? That's all.
As a person with their doctorate, I, I, I understand. I, I would say to us, you know, ultimately, at the end of the day, we want the most highly qualified folks in all of our jobs. And I will tell you that from, you know, just practical experience, I've worked in all aspects of this organization, I would say, um, what degree requirements a person has, whether they have a bachelor's, a master's, a doctorate or so forth, or industry certifications, um, none of those things on, on their face alone are really the determining factor of the value that folks will add. We, you know, the talent matters, the work ethic matters, the skills, the experiences people bring to the table. What we don't want to do is have a situation where minimum quals, especially in a competitive market where many folks who have, you know, lower degree requirements but maybe great skills can go and make more money in other industries. We want to be casting wide enough net that every time we are, are putting jobs out there, we're getting high-quality applicants, not so we can lower the bar, but really so that we can ensure we're not inadvertently taking folks who have great qualifications but just don't meet those ones that we've identified and are overly maybe, may be overvaluing things that in education we value, such as a master's degree, but don't necessarily mean a person can get a master's degree, that doesn't necessarily mean they're going to be the most qualified or best candidate for the job. And so all this does is really enable that process to work, uh, for us. And that's why, uh, HR has brought that forward and we, why we, why I bring it then on their behalf. My pleasure. All right, the next item, M two, approval to piggyback Orange County Public Schools, ITB number twenty-two, zero, eight, two, six, two, lock and door hardware. Uh, so the, the question was, what was the prior lock and door hardware contract amount? And, uh, uh, the piggyback was previously taken to the board for a term of, uh, back November sixteenth, uh, 2023 to November fifteenth, 2024, for $450,000. Uh, as of August 2024, uh, $157,512.15 had been encumbered. Uh, the follow-up question was, did it expire? No, this contract is good through November fifteenth, 2025. This current board agenda item is being presented specifically for the estimated annual expenditure. My pleasure. Uh, item M five, approval to increase the total project cost for roof replacement at Diplomat Middle School. Um, so the questions were, I'm just gonna take them piece at a time. What is the, the prior permanent roof installation date for this was, uh, July first, 1998, with a warranty end date of June 29th, 2018. Uh, so 26, so it's a 26-year-old, uh, roof in, in that sense. Um, has this roof project been completed? And if so, when exactly? Now, the roof is actually scheduled for completion and final inspection this month. Uh, pending approval of the outstanding change order on final repairs to the facade and the subsequent gutter and downspout reinstallation, uh, that will be completed. This is the only aspect that remains to be completed for that project. More follow-up question on that was, as per the contract, the project was to be completed by December 31st, 2023 and the, and per the bid, 120 days. Please advise why the change order was not presented in April 24 when this was discovered? So the project experienced numerous schedule delays, uh, including material delivery delays, lightweight construct, uh, concrete discrepancies from the construction documents, electrical conduit damages, uh, due to the underlayment installation requirements and the referenced unforeseen, uh, brick facade damages behind the gutter location, uh, that was mentioned. After the submission of the change order in April 2024, additional negotiations were required to finalize all the outstanding change order requests. Uh, there were additional delays in submitting this to the board for approval due to the Assistant Director of Maintenance, uh, who left the district, um, which was also the lead for the hurricane, um, repair team. Uh, new hurricane team leadership has been assigned. So again, more follow-up question on that was, why are we now hearing about this increase in deficiency? Well, the contractor did submit change order number three and order four in April 2024. The district and hurricane consulting team, uh, were not in agreement with the validity or the total requested fee for the submitted change orders. After extensive negotiation with, uh, ABI, the change order number four was rejected and change order three was submitted for approval. Will the prior vendor be held accountable for the defective emergency roofing system? So in that sense, uh, the district staff is working with risk management, procurement and legal department to determine options for that, uh, that course of action. Why would the job not be warranted by the other party vendor? Well, the emergency roofing system has a three-to-six-month life expectancy. Uh, work for this new roof did not begin until 10 to 11 months after the installation, so there was no warranty in place at that time. One more thing, a question on this, as per Advanced Roofing's own website, it states they conduct a thorough roof inspection, end quote, "This includes examining the condition of the roofing materials, checking for signs of damage or wear, or identifying any areas that may be at risk for leaks or other issues," end quote. that may be at risk for leaks or other issues," end quote. It also states it will, quote, "develop a comprehensive report with their findings and recommendations," end quote. Was this ever done? Visual roof inspections were completed by the vendor during the pre-bid process. The R F P did not require the referenced services for the roofing contractor. However, R G, the Architect of Record in this case, completed a roof inspection and provided certified drawings to support the required repairs. Follow-up question, do we have a scope of work? Their website says they provide that. Scope of work was included in the hard bid R F P submitted to all the prospective vendors. No additional statement of work document was requested in the R F P for submission by the selected vendor. All right. So I know there's a lot of questions and a lot of answers there. Just want to make sure. Yep.
Ms. Jordan has a question.
Thank you. Thank you for asking those questions, because I had all these questions down. I had spoken to Mr. Prey Bruno, and I was going to speak to Dr. Savage about that, because that is a two-year, it happened after Ian, and every time I go out, there's stuff flying off the roof. So I'm glad to see that we're working on that, and the questions that are asked are really important, because are they going to be held responsible for damage? So that's something we need to, I would love to make sure that we keep up on that one. So thank you for that.
Thank you, ma'am. And hence why we enter it in the record, so you have an official response on all of those aspects. If that's okay, we'll move on to M5, which is the approval to increase the total project, oh, sorry.
Yes, Patrica.
Yeah, so your, if you could go back to B and tell me again what your response was, please advise why the change order was not presented in April of '24 when this was discovered.
So as they, as they mentioned to us, and we requested some additional feedback on that, there were, there were delays. They're attributing it to leadership delays as the leadership were leaving the district. That, in terms of that piece, just elevating it properly up the chain, did not occur. And so that is the, that is the answer for, in this case, it was cited as the assistant director, who's no longer with us. I can't validate beyond that piece as to why else it would have been not done.
All right. I'd like to, if I may, reserve the right with my colleagues to pull this tonight if I have another question. Thank you.
All right. If that's okay, we'll move on to M5, which is the approval to increase the total project cost for roof replacement at Diplomat Middle School. Quote, "Per your request, the internal audit department has reviewed documentation related to the above referenced project. The following exceptions were noted. The contractor's performance and payment bond listed the owner's name as the school district of Lee County instead of the school board of Lee County." So the payment and performance bond reads the school district of Lee County instead of the school board of Lee County, because the school district of Lee County purchase order reads the school district of Lee County. The contractor's payment and performance bonds are being issued to the business name on their respective purchase order, which reads school district of Lee County. This has been escalated to their respective district personnel, and a solution is being worked on to this issue. The question was, we reviewed applications for payment. The district's process requires two signatures from the maintenance department and one signature from the contract. Pay application four was paid with only one signature from the maintenance department. Again, that was a finding from the audit. The two-signature requirement was a new process for maintenance services. That's not something they did in the past. Some of the older projects prior to November 2023 may not have included the second signature. After the new requirement has been instated, the two-signature requirements have been corrected, and it is currently in effect with all new projects. The two-signature requirement has been in place since November Another follow-up was, see below, number eight, which is regarding these exceptions, the two-signature requirement. Are they processes or in policy? This is a process the district has in place. M8 was the approval for the final payment for Fort Myers Middle Academy School gutters downspouts replacement project for bid N 227418 L A. The question was, the contractor's performance and payment bond listed the owner name as the school district of Lee County instead of the school board of Lee County. And again, that's very much to the last piece, the same basic explanation that I just gave. So if you want me to repeat that again. But in this particular case, the contractor performance and payment bonds are reviewed by the department handling the project and the district's auditing department. And again, not a policy, because it's the same, again, not a policy, this is a procedure, a district process. One new piece was, is it reviewed prior to commencement by staff or the board attorney? Well, the payment and performance bond is reviewed by staff prior to commencement. If staff, what department is responsible for reviewing prior to commencement? The department that manages the project, typically maintenance or construction, as you had earlier today from Mr. Rickenbacher, briefing on the construction. Maintenance are all the ones that go into theirs. They are responsible for reviewing that payment and the performance bond. At the time, the project is being closed out and submitted to auditing for final review. Then the school district of Lee County auditing department, which again is our own internal audit department, which is by virtue of the budget piece, it's more of a compliance piece. I don't mean to confuse, because I understand the board auditor often gets confused that this is a case where it's really our internal audit that conducts this piece, that, they review that payments performance bond, and that's precisely the document you have attached to this item as well. So that said, those were the questions that we had and the items that we had. There any additional follow-up on that?
Ms. Patrica.
So rather than pull tonight, I'm looking at page three of the backup material for the questions that Ms. Giavennelli raised regarding Diplomat. And it appears that the change order was signed by a current employee. So I'm not clear on why we would not have been informed in April when a current employee is the one who signed off on it. I knew something didn't sit right when you brought that up.
I'm just going, you're, for the Mariner High School chiller replacement?
No, this is Diplomat.
I'm sorry. Wrong one.
M5, I think it is?
Okay. Well, I understand the question. I would just say that when we ask maintenance as to why, the answer given as to why it was escalated was, this is an assistant director that reports to the director that is listed. So if it was not escalated, I understand. I do. I understand. So that's why it was not listed in the change order, is that, I mean, that's the answer that's been provided to us from maintenance as to why it was not done, that there was a changeover in leadership, and that it was missed. And so that is what occurred. That is what is being stated. So that said, what would be the ask, I would say, of the board in order to, for you to feel comfortable with that aspect of this?
What processes weren't followed, and why weren't they followed? And if a process is not in place, like, this is, I don't know, how can we make sure that this does not happen again? That, to me, is not like really an answer. I'm sorry, it's not an answer that I understand. You're saying, maintenance said what?
Yeah. Maintenance said that the reason they did not, it was a missed item for them, that they did not, that they would have, but because of the changeover in leadership and the changing of hands, they did not see, and it should have been issued as a change order, but it was not. And so that's something that we would address with their leadership staff, and to say that obviously they are obligated to follow board policy and follow all of our procedures. And if that's not done properly, then there's an expectation that they do. That I can say, but that wasn't, that wasn't the question. The question, in this case, we just are giving you an honest answer, which is that's what they attributed to, was the change in leadership. And unfortunately, like, I'm the superintendent, I have to sign all documents. If there's a mistake made, by a level, I sometimes don't find out about it until that mistake surfaces. And then once that is done, we, that's just how, I am the only one who can sign any of those documents. And so I am doing so with the understanding that the staff that is bringing each piece to me has done a proper level of review. When we find that has not taken place, then administratively, we have an issue to solve. And that's what we do. But we don't want to not own it. When these things occur, we want to own it honestly in front of the board. That's why we don't mind answering those, those questions publicly. But that is the response that's given. I'm not saying that that is, I'm not saying it's an excuse. I'm not saying that it's an acceptable answer. What I would say is, it is, and it was the provided answer to the situation, and you as a board, clearly, if you would feel that, well, no, that because I don't appreciate that and I want something else, then I'm hearing it. I mean, I'm just, I'm not sure what else you would want us to do other than to say we, it should have been done, it was not done, and that is, that is a concern to all of us.
Things like this always come back to me, the issue is accountability. Like, what was the follow-up? You don't need to say that publicly. I get that you don't want to talk to us at the board table about discipline for employees, but what is, where's the accountability and what happened? Where was the follow-up? Because the answer provided at this table sounds very dismissive, like, well, a mistake was made. Well, you know, it's kind of a big mistake when you, when you look at issues as a whole. So where is the breakdown in communication? And what steps are we going to put in place to make sure that that breakdown doesn't happen again? You know, we, we had an audit finding regarding runaway costs for a massive project out at Riverdale. We've got to be keeping our eye on things like this as well. So that, I guess that would be the follow-up I would ask for, rather than a dismissive, there was a change in leadership. We can't be making mistakes because there's a change in leadership. That happens all the time with elections and with superintendents and with all of that. There's constant turnover in jobs. What, what processes do we have in place to make sure this doesn't happen again? I guess that's, that would be what I would like to see. Thank you.
Mr. Parsons.
I agree with Ms. Patrica. I mean, all our audit findings from, whether it's R S M or anyone else, it's all come down to where people have not followed policy. The policy is there. We have good policy. So I think there just needs to be word put out that people are going to be held accountable. I'm not saying fire them, but you need to do something. And then from that point on, say, okay, if this is a reoccurring, then there'll be other action taken, demotion or something. I don't know. I'm not the superintendent, nor do I want to be.
Ms. Giavennelli, then Ms. Jordan.
So there's a letter dated 3/19/24, and if you look at it, it looks like there's a big open space from where the signature is. Can I see that? I feel like that some of that's missing, and I would just like to see the whole thing. I feel like there's a communication piece that might be missing. I don't, I don't know why you would have a, you know, have a signature line that far down from, and this is an actual letter, it's not an email, I don't think. So I think there's something missing from it.
Could you, oh, I see. Could you just tell the board where you are?
I'm on the, the attached document, documents. It's not, they're not, oh, eight, it's eight of the 25, looks like, or nine, maybe. Nine, it's nine. I'm sorry. I just, I mean, this contract, my concern was, we had a contract date that was supposed to, this was supposed to be completed by, of December of '23. Here we are in, in almost few months away from '24. So, I mean, what's the point in putting a bid out for something if you can't get the job done? This vendor is not local. I think they have a local office, but they're really out of Tampa and Fort Lauderdale. I did a little more digging around and research on it. And, you know, and I looked at the other bids. It's still considerably lower than the other bids, but the other bid, those were local vendors, and I feel like they have a better, they had a better insight on the job and probably what the costs were going to be. I think that this vendor probably, they went through their contingency and, which is something that Mr. Rickenbacher brought up, product contingency. They went through that with the, the whole electrical issues. But I mean, apparently there was electrical conduits on maybe this, the roof or something. It was just, there was a lot to this. And I just feel like we need to have good eyes on our processes and policies and follow them. And this answer advisory, I'm having a little bit difficult understanding where their job was, because I feel like this was part of their job, and I feel like they kind of maybe failed. I don't know. So I may be wrong. Maybe it was, maybe it was our, the staff. I just, at this, you know, I am concerned, though. Something that should have been done long ago.
We'd be happy to provide more comprehensive, I mean, obviously, the, the whole point of having documentation and making that available is so that there is transparency in all of that piece. I mean, one of the reasons why we're happy to bring back the more regular capital updates, one of the reasons why we have Mr. Rickenbacher addressed directly, and why we have staff from the construction as well as maintenance to be there to respond to aspects is, is for that transparency and to have that more regular follow-up. So those changes and things can be explained more closely to the time which they occur and not well after the fact. Secondarily to that, one of the safeguards and guardrails we also put in place, having our internal compliance department review and look for these things, which is completely independent from that, that division, is to give that transparency of things that should have been done that weren't. So precisely why it's brought forward is to say, these are things that are caught. That happens for all those major construction. Now, yes, it's after the fact, but the whole point is to identify them, to identify patterns of those things, and then to learn from them, to see, are they fails our process? Are there extenuating circumstances? All those things. So what I don't want to say is that it's being dismissive. I think it's trying to answer the question honestly, isn't attempting to dismiss it. It's strictly just to provide the specific answer to that question, not to then validate that it was proper, or that it's really just to say, you know, when asked, why, how did this ball get dropped? And in some cases, I will say that has, it has often, not just in this area, but in many areas, to vacant staff. Like, for example, when our district was, had numerous I schools that were all the sudden Is, that because of insufficient numbers of students tested. And it involves many, many different departments and areas working together. The culprit was a vacant director position, you know, that that was somehow the issue. Was that really the fair and accurate accounting of it? I would say no. That's why the accountability, that's why having, giving voice to it and saying, I'm more than happy to own every mistake that is made, that, that our staff either failure, failure to follow process, failure to handle, you know, transition of employees out, that is our obligation. But I just want the board to be aware, part of the reason you know about the things, why you have it, is because of those additional guardrails where these things then are brought to you. After the fact, if errors have been made, they're still brought to you. If a, if an audit report that our own folks have done, not a board auditor, but our own internal audit has done it and brought it forward, that is a safeguard. Those are all checks and balances for transparency so that you can, just like we had a whole briefing on Riverdale as an example, so that, you know, take comments said that teachers are building schools, they paid $100 million for nothing, it was all done because an angry parent. These are things were uttered at I S O C, were absolutely not accurate statements. We attempted to answer those things transparently with a 90-minute briefing, where you had a chance to ask any question you could, have multiple vantage points together. All those things are done to try to own anything that could even be perceived as a failure, so that we're owning our opportunities to improve and taking board direction where proper. So now, if it's, I apologize, tone-wise, maybe that's a came off dismissive. It wasn't, it was just, we have a, you know, about 30 questions in piece, and we're just trying to make sure we're answering exactly what's asked. But I think, hopefully, this is additional context that is speaking to, I think, what the ask is, which is, what is the accountability, then, which we'll be happy to provide more to the board. Absolutely be happy to do that.
Ms. Jordan.
I just wanted to just add a couple other comments. I know that this took place, the roof took place during the hurricane. There was a new principal that came in to this roof situation, which he, you know, inherited. But I will tell you, I've spoken about this roof on many occasions, and the people that are on here are the people that I spoke to. So we are, too often, we use the, that, the term about the turnover. I mean, to me, I feel like lately, we've been using it a lot more than ever before. And again, regardless of, we still have to make sure that we are adherent to our policies and our processing to make sure that we can continue on, because we have a job to do, and we have to continue that. So we need to stop using that, those words, or come up with something, a different terminology, because that does get old after a while. Thank you.
Ms. Giavennelli.
So, thank you, Ms. Jordan. So in, in your discussions, because this is change order number three, and it was brought up earlier about change orders, but I don't recall, especially with all the delays from the, from the actual original contract. I even went and pulled the, the contract back, was a year ago, June. And so my concern is, we weren't even advised that there's delays because of numerous schedule delays, product delays. I mean, the things that you mentioned, Dr. Savage. So, I mean, and then this, again, this is number three. So I don't know if the change order process is working. So.
I'm happy to. So one thing that construction often does in a lot of their projects is, by building in contingency, they essentially give themselves more discretion in this particular case. I, you know, I think that's something that we have to continue to evaluate, is are we, are we properly, you know, we, we want to obviously bring in the, the best value that we possibly can at all times, but in some cases, if we're setting unrealistic expectations, especially for unknowns and things that come to us, we, like, we have another example that was earlier, in terms of, you know, unforeseen things under the structure that they weren't aware. I mean, there are things, we heard it in the Riverdale earlier example, even in the major construction projects where they did set aside significant level of contingency when they have on the unknown plumbing issues that you heard all about today. So there's a number of examples of that. I think that's one of the things that, that Mr. Rickenbacher has always prided himself on, was returning contingent funds, that we'd set aside contingency but then returning them to the board. So the board is well aware that we've budgeted, but we've also done so with a sense of building a little bit of an opportunity, so we don't have to come back to the board in what appears to be overrun, to what in case, some cases, the contingency maybe was insufficient. So I, I'm happy to get with our operations folks and have a little bit more dialogue, because obviously, as uncomfortable as all this is for us to dialogue, they are hearing every bit of it. And so they're well aware of that, and any, and the project managers and the folks who are responsible for reviewing it. And so these are things that all become lessons, opportunities learned for those folks as well. So I do appreciate it, as direct as it may be, but we'll continue to try to improve with this type of feedback.
Ms. Patrica.
Yeah, not, not to beat a dead horse, but, you know, you talked about transparency and putting this in front of the board. It's not, it's not in front of the public, so that there's a lack of transparency there, number one. Number two, you know, I had my one-on-one with you last Number two, you know, I had my one-on-one with you last week, I think, maybe earlier this week, I'm losing track, and this, you didn't raise this as an issue, you know what I mean? Like, it was just put in as part of the agenda, like, no mistake had ever been made. I'm, I'm more accustomed to, if an error has been made, and it's an item on the agenda, the superintendent bringing that to my attention, so that we can have that conversation back there, instead of out here, if that makes sense. Um, so, while you talk about transparency, this feels like it lacks transparency to me. So those are my, like, I don't want to beat a dead horse, I just want you to be clear on what expectations are, those are my comments, thank you.
I'm just going to check with Ms. Morgan. Ms. Morgan, do you have a follow-up or any comments?
I mean, listening to this conversation, I'm, I'm just going to make some general comments. It's not enough for a superintendent to accept responsibility. Um, if you're running a tight organization with tight policy and process, there are never extenuating circumstances, because there are always people in the leadership chain who are obligated to step in, who are expected to step in, and who are held accountable if they don't step in. The point has been made that we will always have turnover. And when there is turnover, there is no excuse for mistakes. There just isn't. Somebody is always watching what's going on. Everybody knows what their job is, and, um, everybody knows they're going to be held accountable. And I think the point being made about expectation and accountability, this is the same comment Jennifer Cupid-McCoy, Dr. Cupid-McCoy, made this very, very clear in her comments at our last board meeting. Expectations and accountability are what are going to transform this district, not saying I own something, and not having accountability for what is not working. Um, if the organization isn't tight enough, it's your responsibility to tighten it, if the policies and processes aren't tight enough. It's your responsibility to see that that happens. I'm just really discouraged by this conversation. Sorry I missed this, when I read through the, um, board meeting, but I think this is a very important conversation for the board to have amongst themselves and with the superintendent, and those are my comments, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda is public comment. Attorney DePauw Bruno, please address public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda. If you completed a public comment card, please provide it to the staff. Public comment will be held at the podium in the center aisle and front. Please be advised that the board will not respond during public comment to remarks made by speakers. However, at the conclusion of public comment, the chair or superintendent may respond. Speakers who fail to follow proper decorum in the chambers will rule, be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the microphone per Board Policy 0169.1, and may be removed from the chambers. There will be one warning. Per Board Policy 0169.1, the time per speaker is three minutes if there are 20 speakers or less. You will find a countdown on the big screens in the front of the room. Once your time has elapsed, the microphone will automatically shut off. Please state your name when you approach the microphone. And, Madam Chair, there are two individuals that would like to address the board at this briefing.
Okay? Um, Attorney DePauw Bruno, please proceed.
Will Dr. Madeline Stewart and Marge Cox please line up?
Hours later. I'm Madeline Stewart. I am a member of the Purple Group, and I just wanted to remind you of who we are, because we're, we've been here for a while, and we're going to continue to be coming. I just wanted to, to say that we believe that public schools should be welcoming to all students and their families. And that's because public education is the bedrock of our multicultural, multi-ethnic democracy. So, when I read the handbook on civil rights, I, one, well, certainly, it is not welcoming. And when I heard the speaker talk about making it user-friendly, the whole tone and content of the handbook seems to be on control, control of teachers and control of students, and not really on their rights. Um, I, first of all, I'm wondering, who, you, there's a beautiful little triangle about the teacher, the student, and the parent. Who, who is the, who is this handbook intended for? And where did the public, I read about it on board docs, I, and I know it was announced in the newspaper, but how does the public at large actually have a chance to digest this, and to really think through what the meanings and ramifications are? One of the things that concerns me, you're going to, you're going to create, this is going to be turned into policy, and what worries me is that so many of these things sound like there has to be somebody who's a police person in the school, who is checking up on all of these things. And that really scares me, because we're talking about a school district that wants to be passionate, and personal, and progressive, and none of that has anything to do with being personal. It sounds like the teacher can't be personal with the student, and the student can't be personal with the teacher. And that is such a terrible, terrible thing. When there's no trusted adult a student could actually talk to, you say, well, okay, so if the, the teacher's going to have to say, well, go and see a counselor, but we already know we don't have any counselors, we don't have enough counselors. So, it's, it's how this is going to be operationalized that really concerns me. Um, I don't want the school to feel like it's a police state. I want students to feel that they are welcomed for who they are, even though who they are doesn't have, isn't something that other, that other people may agree with. That doesn't matter. They are who they are, and I think that's
Thank you.
My name is Marge Cox. I'm a retired educator, I live in Bonita Springs, and I want to start off by saying, I appreciate the hours you put in to being a school board member, a school administrator, and the number of meetings that you have to attend. I find them exhausting, and I don't come to all of them. I get to them here today, because as I read through the, the Equity Civil Rights Guide, I found some parts that I, I have a concern about. We dealt with one of them earlier, on page seven, where it says the school staff will be addressed by their legal name. And if I understood correctly, then how that will actually be, was that it can be a shortened name or a nickname. I think the policy ought to, or the guide ought to read what's actually going to, to be acceptable, not, here's what it says, will be addressed by their legal name, and then, yes, but, here are exceptions to that, put that here, so that it's clear to everybody. The other piece that I found concerning was in the restroom, locker room section, and where it talked about students not needing spatial permission, and I thought, please, let's not make life any harder for our kids than it already is. Let's assume they can figure out going to the restroom and into their locker rooms, and that you don't need spatial permission for that. Thank you for your time this afternoon, I appreciate it.
Please, public comment. Thank you. Dr. Savage, do you want to comment on that?
Unless there's something the board would like me to address, no, I don't have anything.
No. All right, next up is good of the order. I just want to draw attention to the time, it is 3:54, I believe we have a meeting at 5:00. Okay. Um, next up is good of the order, board members, do you have any comments? I'm going to start with Ms. Morgan. I'll come back, Mr. Persons.
I have none at this time.
Ms. Jordan.
I have none at this time.
Ms. Patrica.
I'm going to give my ITF update tonight, if I may get with Chief Montomano, between now and then, because there's something in my notes that I don't understand, if that's okay with the superintendent. Um, and then, I'm going to repeat this tonight, bring your car to Fort Myers Tech, please, if your car is broken, if it's making a funny noise, if you, for some reason, need to have some work done on your car at all, those poor kids are sitting there doing this, because there are no cars in their garage to work on. Um, so I will repeat that tonight. I don't, I don't know how it works, I don't know how you pay for it, I don't know any of that stuff, I just know that, um, that you pay for parts. These kids need to work on cars, they can't just sit in classrooms and theorize how to fix a car, they need to actually fix a car. So, please bring your car into Fort Myers Tech. Um, and then, if I may, through the chair, to the superintendent, where do we stand in terms of a board auditor? Is this a discussion this board has already had?
I missed it.
And I missed it? No? Okay, so, it's my understanding that we, as a board, need to hire a board auditor, and the two other people that we hire are a superintendent, no longer in November, but in the past, a superintendent and a board attorney. And when we did that, we had HR sort of run the process for us, even though HR doesn't work for us. Um, I know that we've advertised, I know nothing really other than that, so if this board is serious about hiring a board auditor, I think that we need to have a discussion about appointing HR and having HR, like, let's put this process in place and get her done, is my point, so.
Yep, I'm happy to respond.
Long.
Yep, so HR is going to be handling our piece of it. I think the key for us was, if you wanted them to work through, you know, in the past, we would sometimes have it work through a specific board member, whether that was the chair directly, is usually, or vice chair, or a appointed member, uh, to kind of liaise with them. The, the plan was to have them provide the information, you know, to all board members in the board weekly, so you're getting resumes, you're getting process overview, all those kinds of things, trying to nail that down and get you to a highly qualified applicant and whatnot, uh, in process, just so that you have a chance to have that routinely. You can also bring issues to us through the board weekly, but that was the attempt, was to at least have a point person on the board, uh, that was something that I had ready to ask you all as well, in case you wanted to nominate someone, or if you wanted to work through the chair, uh, but it was going to be working direct with our, our HR system as well, just to get that across the finish line for you all.
I, I don't know if chair makes sense, because we're going into November, I mean, I'm happy to give it to the chair, if he's willing to keep it after the new chair takes place, or if you think you're going to be the chair, we give it to you now, and you keep it after November, totally up to you guys, but I do think we need somebody on the board to start to carry this, so that we can get it over the finish line.
Ms. Jordan, follow-up.
Thank you. Um, and I think I had this conversation with Dr. Savage regarding this, just with the community out there, auditors and different, um, people were speaking about the title of that, because I think we've only had, like, two, uh, applications that came in for that position, but because of the fact that it says chief, they believe it is under the superintendent. And so that's a confusion out there. And so I just wanted to bring that back up, I know we did have conversation about that prior, but again, um, that was something that I did hear, and I did address that with, um, Dr. Savage, because of that reason, people believing that it's under, because he has the chiefs under, chiefs are under superintendent. So I just wanted to bring that back out again.
Yeah, that, that feedback was actually from Kevin Carnes, when, uh, the feedback that was provided was that to consider that potential naming, that's the only reason we shifted to the chief name. That said, uh, we, the board is free to give, I mean, it's, it's very easy for us to edit at any given time, based on feedback from the collective board, so if you want it called simply, probably the most visible, uh, one that we had brought before was just board auditor, um, is, is the most simple, that's what it was before, that's what, we had it, the job description used to be, was the board auditor. Um, however, it could be, I mean, as I mentioned before, Palm Beach has an inspector general, uh, there are any configuration the board would want, uh, obviously, it was modeled after, the job description was modeled after the largest districts that have the most expansive function of it, Miami-Dade, Broward, Palm Beach, and so forth, that's where all of the specific requirements were pulled from their, um, aspects, and so I, I think whatever the board wishes, uh, that was the feedback, though, of why we landed with a chief auditor name, that was the feedback of why.
Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. And if I would ask if we could, um, have our HR specialist who knows, you know, understands all this, maybe perhaps, uh, give us a recommendation on what that name would be? I think that would maybe help us, but I, I just know that even some of the people from the audit committee had said, um, had spoke about the word chief. And other ex-clerks, clerks of courts also have, uh, approached me and asked me, why did we call that, that name? Just wanted to, thank you.
Mr. Persons, then back to Ms. Patrica.
Yeah. I mean, I like, it's called the KISS method, keep it simple, we'll leave the last part off. But, uh, I think board auditor is just as simple as, it tells you exactly who they're working for, exactly what they're doing, and I think that's probably good. And if we need to change it later or something, we can always, of course, go back and do that, as we do often.
Okay.
So shall we consider this board direction to, um, the superintendent to ask your chief of HR to make that change, bring it in front of the board? Number one. Number two, can we come to some kind of consensus as to who should be in charge of this for the board going forward? I mean, I don't care who it is, I think you two should fight it out, and I think she'll win.
Well, you missed the meeting where we were going to have an arm wrestle, so, I'm sorry. Um, I think Mr. Fisher is, I mean, as head, as sitting chair, I think he needs to continue, and if it goes past that, whoever the next sitting chair is, I mean, maybe we can come up with a conclusion between, between now and then.
So do we have consensus on that?
Yeah. Mr. Fisher, do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, if that's the, the will of the board, I will happily carry that out.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have what you need?
Yes, absolutely.
Did you have anything else, Ms. Patrica?
I'll give the rest of my comments tonight.
Okay. Ms. Giavennelli.
And I'll be quick, too. Um, I am wearing pink because, I don't know, we see, we received a letter a few months ago, rega, uh, I forgot the student, I'm going to have to Google my, or search my email, but she had a friend that was bullied and took her own life, it was Aubrey Wyatt, and yesterday was her birthday, and that student had asked us to wear pink, and I'm wearing pink that, today, to celebrate Aubrey Wyatt, and, um, and, uh, wearing pink against bullying. So I just wanted to bring that up, because that's probably the most important thing I'm going to say today. And then, um, one other thing I, that I would, I really want this board to really talk about, and sooner than later, is that Barrow, um, took cell phones out of their school, and, and a whole big video, and, um, I think we really need to seriously think about that. I know Mr. Persons has brought it up a couple times, but I think we really need to have a conversation about, um, cell phones in schools, or no cell phones in schools, really. So, um, I just want to, it's a, Ms. Jordan wanted to talk, have it, you know, we should talk about it, and this is something we should talk about, it can't just come overnight, um, you know, we just can't make it, make a decision on the, on the flies, on this, we should really need to talk about it, and I'm really concerned over, um, cell phones in schools and what it's doing to our children. Thank you.
Ms. Giavennelli, I'm going to let Mr. Persons follow-up to your comment.
There are policy as it stands now, is it the cell phone supposed to go into the backpack at first bell, or in, somewhere on off?
I know that.
You know, so there, there's handy, in case there's an emergency, I can understand that, parents worry about it, and they can have their cell phone on the bus, so the parents can track where the bus is, it seems to be more accurate than ours, but it's the enforcement of that, that we need to maybe put some teeth into. And, uh, I know one district says, first time they're caught with their phone out, it goes to the office, and they get it at the end of the day, the next time, the parent has to come get it.
So
So, something along those lines, it might be a, a good idea, that's
I saw the video, the kids are saying they don't even miss it, and they're having a conversation, and, and they're, but that's not happening in schools, in our, you know, with, if the, the phones are in their hand. Um, they, uh, I believe they got, there's a grant out there for these little pocket, the things for the phones, and, um, I think we need to look into that, but that's a conversation, like I said, that we all need to talk about, but I, I am concerned, uh, they know it's, they call them the iPad kids, they know it's affecting them and their learning, or, and so, um, even social skills. So I, I just wanted to bring it up, and I, I don't know that it should be a, too much of a workshop or briefing, but we know, because we already know the outcome, we already know the data. Um, what are we going to do about it? It's really, I'm putting it back on this board to, I'm challenging the board to, let's make it some decisions for accountability, then. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher, I think, had a follow-up.
Yeah. Briefly, yeah, it was under my understanding, when we did the code of conduct, the guidance we gave was to follow up for this to complete, perhaps was to follow up for this to complete perhaps this semester, and part of that was to get rid of the exemptions, you know, lunchroom, those kind of things. And that was part of the, the policy change we're looking at, so.
Ms. Patrica?
Yeah, and I thought we were, we had asked the superintendent to have a conversation with principals as well. Yeah. To get their feedback on whether and how this would work. That's first thing. The second thing is being really careful about comparing our demographic of students and families to the demographic at Bishop Barrow, and understanding that there is a massive difference there.
Well, I'm not really comparing them, but I'm just bringing it up, conversation. And I, I, obviously, it's different. I don't know how that we could have, I mean, the way I was watching the video, I don't know how they could even take, we could go through our students and getting their phone out of the little bag, the, the little magnet thing that they, that locks them up, but the logistics of that was overwhelming a little bit for me even. So I don't know that that's the answer, but I just know we need to know more about that and make accountability. I'm good with, I'm good with starting there. Thank you.
And my, my final comment is the legality of seizing student belongings at the beginning of a school day, or if at any point, you know, it's not, it's not like we're taking away a vape pen or, you know, marijuana or something. A phone is a legal thing, and although it might violate policy, I had always heard a rumor that there was a law that didn't allow us to do that. So I'm sure that the rumor is not true, but if we could look at the legality of that and how we would go about dealing with parents who are claiming we're taking their kids' stuff, that'd be great. Thank you.
Well, the little, they keep the little packet. I mean, they're the little, I don't even know what, the fold, whatever the phone goes into. The student keeps it on their, on them. It's never, you'll never take it from them. So I don't, like I said, I don't know the logistics completely and how they work, but I know that the students all said, hey, we're talking at lunch, and they, it was all positive rather than negative, so.
Mr. Persons, then we're going to move on.
Okay. I just want to say that there is a ton of data out there that shows it's better, not just Bishop Barrow. I mean, there was an article out long ago from a Naples school, the, there's districts that have been doing this for a while, like Artie Orlando, District Orange County, and there's positive things been written up on that out in California, which is totally different, but still not high income or anything like a Barrow or something along those lines. And Barrow is very, they have a lot of diversity. Thank you. And their school population. But I just think it's a great idea, so I just think we just need to get some accountability and enforce it. I know it's tough to take something away cold turkey, but we need to see after this semester where we're at and go from there. And again, when I say take it away, I don't mean grab it from them unless they abuse it. And to me, if you have a vape pen when you're not supposed to have it, yeah, that's your personal property, but we can take it from you. If you have your phone, but you have it out when you're not supposed to, yes, we can take it back from you. We can't keep it. And we shouldn't be able to, we should have guidelines to say you can't try to open it or whatever, make them open it. That's all.
Ms. Giavennelli, do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Fisher?
Thank you. And regards to Ms. Giavennelli about the pouches, may I, when I have the discussion, I'll follow up because I was on the Oasis board when we had those, and this, it was not a success. So I'll bring some of my discussion from that weekend. Real quick, the only thing I wanted to bring up is, it's been a while, but the student representative, I'm going to kind of continue looking at it. I, you know, continue to talk administration. I'd like, again, to see perhaps, as I said, instead of having the student representative, we have a student or multiple students, whether it's student government, perhaps, you know, at every action meeting or every other action meeting, presenting perhaps a, a topic that is, you know, important to many students, you know, three to five-minute presentation. So I, I got a little bit delayed with the superintendent change in April, as well as some of the July stuff, but I'm looking to kind of pick that back up. I just wanted to give you an update, and I had some discussions with the superintendent about that. That's all I have for my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to piggyback off of what Ms. Giavennelli has said, I believe the last thing I had heard, we were going to try to make sure that we were following school procedure and policies, and then revisit the cellphone in the second, four-second semester and possibly the next school year. The cellphone packets are a great idea, and like you said, the logistics might be a little sticky, plus obviously, it's a, another cost, unless you can get a grant. But there are other ways that I have seen, and not just our private schools, but other public schools that are doing this with success. And you're right, they, the communication alone, I mean, not to mention the help of always having your head down, and the long-term effects of that is a true thing. But I, I'm happy to have that discussion very soon if we want to maybe start talking about it in our one-on-ones and then bringing it for discussion here at the dais. I do have comments that I will leave for this evening, and, but I'm going to go ahead and move on. Ms., and I do believe, I did get confirmation Ms. Morgan is off the line, so. Ms. DePauw Bruno, do you have anything?
No, I, I don't. Thank you.
Dr. Savage?
Yes. Madam Chair, just in the interest of, you know, kind of condensing, so there's nothing for this evening, and just because we're, you know, obviously, for some of our folks that just wrapped up school for the day, just an opportunity to really express condolences, not just for myself, but really on behalf of all of us, I know, and really all educators, really all educators in our country and so forth, you know, the Appalachia, the, the two teachers and the two students who lost their lives, and again, what has, what has become really unfortunately troubling trend, increase over the last few years of significant increases in mass shootings, not just in schools, but really in, in many aspects of occupied spaces in our society. Unfortunately, that's one of the things, the negative byproducts of those aspects is the more numerous they become, they, they can sometimes continue to, to increase. And so we, we talked about it a little bit today when we met with all the principals, but wanted to, to, you know, highlight, we, we spend a lot of time talking, a lot of times, about hardening efforts and things, like weapons threat detection and so forth. Those are all wonderful things. We have gates, we have locked doors, we have a lot of things that can, that are really great security measures to put in place. But the one thing we rarely talk about, that is, is the most significant aspect in preventing major, major threat incidents and so forth, is really the person-to-person's interaction, that a lot of the best, the best protection really is for human beings to build relational value together. So whether that's students forming relationships with other peers, whether that's students forming relationships with their, with their adults who are in their lives, whether it's adults really taking that effort and making that, whether it's all people doing it together, that safety really, and keeping people safe, is really about building a culture where individuals are coming together and really getting to know each other. So no one feels isolated. So people see changes in aberrant behavior. That's really what threat assessment is all about. It's situational awareness. It's everyone taking accountability for each other and building rapport and relationships that no people are left behind, not just to prevent shootings, but to prevent people from harming themselves, preventing that piece. That is really an interesting, as I mentioned today, to the principals. One of the number-one things that we know that has a positive value educationally is for our students to feel like they aren't isolated alone, that they feel heard, that they feel seen at school, that they connect to people, that they connect to activities, they connect, that they feel in their, they're adults that care about them, that are invested in their learning. And so while we have these tragic moments, and we have our condolences and so forth, there's just an, always a reminder of us being able to come together as people and work together and build relationships. And so that was something we wanted to make sure we mentioned today. But again, not to take away from just the, the absolute trauma and awful feelings of that community, those families and those lost lives and so forth today, as a school system, anywhere, we really just take, we, we take great pause with that and wanted to make sure, I'd be a mess if I didn't mention something from this role. We did put something out last night as well, just for folks to, to be aware that we are, our thoughts and prayers are with folks as well. So I just wanted to make that as the only piece of it, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Savage. And thank you for mentioning that. Today, we have a special meeting at 5:05 PM and a regular action meeting at 6:00 PM. At this point, having no other business to come before this body and seeing no objection, this meeting is adjourned and the time is 4:14 PM.